I've come here to you. I'm going to cry.
Hi there.
Hi there.
Hey, it's not bad.
He kept you guys in line?
What?
Tell me, Detective, did you hear him? Did I call for silence?
I didn't even know.
No problem. No problem. Hello, sir.
Hi, how are you? Good. Hi, Jamie.
Lauren.
How are you?
Good. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Happy to be here.
Didn't bring my beverage down.
I know, I know. You're more probably the real beverage. Didn't bring my glasses, so I can't see anyone. So if anyone is making faces to me, let me know.
Are you all good?
Oh, sorry.
If you're loading or anything, what do you have coming up here?
We'll just, what we'll do, we'll go ahead. We don't need to talk about it. Just put it on the agenda for the next agenda.
Okay.
And that will be announced through public.
You're normal. Thanks.
You got your candy and your water.
So you know.
I might have a can.
Okay. Oh, yeah, you do, don't you?
I read this. What do you think of this? Now.
Our son's at home living with us, so it's kind of fun.
How old is he?
Thirty.
Yeah.
He just got back from Spain, looking for real work.
It seemed curly.
Graduated from Humboldt.
I'll open it here.
A little difficult.
Find someone to sue. I'm trying to figure out, you know, I was talking to Catherine. You ready, Sue? Jamie, you ready? Okay. Welcome to Thursday night meeting in the Capitol City Council. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Botter.
Here.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Termany.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Here. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. A republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could everyone please remain standing for a second? John Marlowe, who is our city attorney, a number of years back with the city of Capitola, is probably not many people in the room that remember him. He served a city, he's also a Superior Court Judge for the County of Santa Cruz. Passed away this week, and we would like a moment of silence for him and his family. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, John, for your service to the community of Capitola. We had no closed session this evening, and so have we received any additional materials? Sue?
We did receive some additional material that is in front of you. Two items regarding, excuse me, regarding 8C, the Outreach Committee, and one item regarding item 8A regarding the Rispen Mansion.
Okay, thank you, Sue. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Jamie?
Staff has no changes.
Okay. This is time for public comment. Oral communication allows for times for members of the public to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda. Presentations, we limited three minutes per speaker. Individuals may not speak more than once during oral communications. Please sign in as you come up. Thank you very much for coming.
Signed in. Dan Stein Group, 701 Monterey Avenue. As you know, I'm opposed to the proposed skate park at Monterey Park. As the permitting process approaches, I'm getting more and more concerned about this proposed 6,000-square-foot park with all of the noisy advanced features smack in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Some of the closest homes are going to be 70 feet from the noisiest aspects of this I have talked to the city of Pacifica, Redwood City, Martinez-Samatale. Martinez was closed because of graffiti, but, and Samatale. They all had one thing in common: None of these parks are in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Redwood City, where I grew up, I know the park very well. When I spoke to them, it's similar to Scotts Valley. You can hardly see the homes. They're separated by playing fields. That was just a quick note I wanted to bring up. Please keep this thing in mind, because it's very disconcerting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan.
I am Daryl Johnson.
And I'm Jane Slukras, and we're board members for the Seniors Council of Santa Cruz County.
We want to begin by expressing our appreciation to all of you for the way you've supported community projects in the past, and especially the $5,000 grant that you made to Companion for Life last year. Well, we're here tonight to share with you some information about aging in the state and particularly our county. Seniors over 60 represent the fastest-growing age group in California, with the 65-74 age group growing even faster at 26.5 percent. In Santa Cruz County, 60-plus population has increased by 27 percent since 2011, or, yeah, 2011. And over 6,000 of the county's 56,000 seniors are eligible for Medicare, Medi-Cal. Eight percent of the population consumes 75 percent of the health care costs, with the vast majority being seniors with chronic conditions. Forty-two percent of older Santacruises aged 65 and above do not have enough income to meet their basic needs.
The health care providers and experts in the field of aging have identified long-term services and support as the most effective strategy for maintaining the health, independence, and the quality of life for our seniors. Santa Cruz County's long-term services support network continues to provide high-quality, effective services. Unfortunately, many organizations are cutting back their hours of service, have long waiting lists, and are struggling to operate. Funding is shrinking, reporting requirements are increasing, and the complexity of and demand for the delivery services continues to grow. Meanwhile, the funding from the Older Americas Act programs is at the 1984-85 level. The state funding on the Older Californias Act has been eliminated. A couple comments from seniors from our last needs assessment. One gentleman wrote that "I have too much income to receive benefits from programs, but not enough to manage my life." And another said "Social Security doesn't cover property taxes, homeowner insurance, utilities, put food on my table, clothes on my back, shoes on my feet, vehicle maintenance, home health care, and prescriptions. These are necessities, not wants."
Thank you.
Thank you, seniors, and council for your dedication to Capitola and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is John Doan. I am actually here as a visitor from neighboring Livock in Santa Cruz on behalf of the Vista Prada Homeowners Association. I'm here to get direction on where I might find details on this incident that occurred at Capitola Shores on the 12th of May, which I just found out about last week. Apparently, several smart meters exploded off their wall. Our concern is that we have all of our electrical meters on an interior wall. Twelve are smart, the rest of the 44 are analog, opted out. But if one of ours, or more were to do this, it would probably cut phone lines as well as do other interior damage. Shall I contact Capitola's finest next door, or Central Fire, or both? Do you have any recommendations for me?
I would follow up to two places. I'd follow up to the local fire department, number one, if it's a fire issue. And also, obviously, PG&E.
I have a call in to Mark Torres, manager of customer relations. He and I have talked before, but, yeah, we play phone tag.
Fortunately, we don't have a lot to say about electricity in our community, but...
Yeah, I was just wondering if the police might have responded and prepared a report, or I saw nothing in the local media. I only read the weeklies, but I was amazed to be informed by other, one resident and one outside the area, so-called, that this happened, and I might be of interest, since I have a fiduciary duty to safety over there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Hello, members of the council. My name's Doug Bowman. I live on Orchid Avenue, adjacent to Monterey Park, and I would like to say that I am opposed to the 6,000-square-foot. As we approach the permitting and the environmental impact report phase of this, I just would urge the council, since we do have McGregor, it is a featured skate park and is good for advanced as well as learning skaters, that we consider just scaling back to like the 2,000-foot, not as featured, not as noisy, not as big a draw to all ages as we were originally considering, and keep it as a family park as opposed to a skate park. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Good evening, council members. My name is Margaret Kinsler, and I'm attending this meeting as a member of the CDRA Capitola Village Residents Association Board. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight, Margaret.
Thank you.
Councilmember City Staff, my name is Richard Lippi. I live on Monterey Avenue. And I think I have some very interesting information to share with you tonight. The, I'm talking about, I'm referring to the proposed skate park at Monterey Park, which at this time I have to oppose. One of the main reasons is, I think for myself and quite a few others, is we are not really sure what the long-term ramifications might be of this particular design. And looking into the February 11th agenda packet, I see under item 4A, Additional Materials, an email from Tricia Proctor, it's page 39, where she states to the City Council, "Dear City Council, letter from OJ Superintendent, Ojai Superintendent, who has a skate park right next to their district office and school." And her implication here is that here's an example of a skate park that works right next door to a school. The response from the superintendent is "The new skate park is now more than three years old and rests at the far east end of the district office property." Well, that kind of piqued my interest. How far east is it? So I looked it up on Google, and this is Ojai, California, in Ventura County. And as it turns out, it's a 12,500-square-foot skate park. The nearest neighbor is 216 feet away. That's the nearest neighbor. In our particular situation, the nearest neighbor is 60 feet, which is myself, and then 90 feet, and so forth. There is a school next door. It's the Chaparral High School. It's a, and I called them today, it's a continuing education high school of 60 students. There's a two-story gymnasium 120 feet from the skate park that blocks any noise going to the district office section of the building, and the classrooms are 300 feet away. But again, it's for the high school. Interestingly enough, too, that on either side of the school and skate park are gas stations and a shopping center. It's completely commercial on that side, and on the opposite side of the street, again, it's commercial. There's an auto supply center, the Ojai Beverage Company, Fresh Grill Bakery, frozen yogurt, La Fuente. And I'd just like to say that in this particular case, if we go out 300 feet from the skate park, we find a total, some total of six homes. Everything else is commercial. In our particular situation here, if we go out 300 feet, we have 18 homes on Monterey Avenue, 16 homes on Plum Street, 14 homes on Unipro Court, eight homes on Eleanor Street, 14 homes on Orchid Avenue, six homes on Wesley Street, four homes on Cabrillo Street, and multiple residences at 600 Park Avenue. I think that this example that Tricia has brought forward shows that a skate park can work in a commercial area.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Richard.
My name is Mike Sanders. I live at 231 Gin Pero Court. I've lived there for 28 years to raise my three kids, have my grandkids. And I'm here because I'm opposed to the Monterey Skate Park. It seems obvious to me to everybody, and there already is a skate park going down the street. And on our street, Cul-de-sac, when I moved in, it was filled with kids. The kids have grown and moved, the parents are still living there. There's only one family with young kids on the street. The rest are either retired or heading towards retirement. So the demographic there doesn't really support the park. My backyard faces where this, exactly where the skate park is going to be. So I do have a vested interest in all of this. There are a lot of people opposed, like I am, that don't want to do public speaking, don't want to do appearances, but I'm willing to do that for this. I also don't understand what's in it for the builder. Builder's not doing it for free. Somebody's getting something out of it financially. It appears to me, that's the way I take it. It looks like there's a couple of board members that maybe are going to benefit from this, too, because they're strongly wanting to get this in no matter what. They've been pushing it for years. So that's what, or I'm coming from. I have a lot of other reasons. You've already heard all of them, so I don't need to go through that. But I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Mike.
I have a friend who lives at Capitola Shores who had to work tonight, so she can't be here. But you heard earlier, many of you have been emailed, that a smart meter, so-called, exploded during a power surge, about 100 of them, nearly caused a fire. My friend spoke to the woman who lives where the wall is, and her power surge protectors were smoldering. This is really a safety and health issue. PG&E should really be called, what somebody said here before, poison, gas, and explosions. PG&E, poison, gas, and explosions. And they have a whole history of disaster and causing damage. San Bruno, smart meters, Diablo Canyon, electromagnetic frequency hazards, acoustic seismic testing, Hinkley and Kettelman Hills fracking. I have a paper that goes into the details of these disasters. We can't sit or stand idly by while this serious safety and health assault is taking place. In fact, in, let's see where, hundreds of thousands of smart meters have been recalled in Saskatchewan, Oregon, Florida, and Pennsylvania because of the fire risk. People have died, and homes have been destroyed. You're always recognizing the firemen for their courageous work. You're always talking about preventing fires, and what the homeowners can do. We have to put a halt to PG&E causing fires. It was lucky that this area didn't go up on Ruby Court, and it affected power outage also at Whole Foods and caused a serious fire. There have been fires caused. All of this wireless technology is microwave radiation with the cell towers, the microcells. And where I live, they put 13 of these cell towers on utility poles in the public right-of-way. And, and, there's smart meters on the pole, right there. And PG&E sends out a safety warning in their bill. Do not put tools, equipment, or antennas, it states, closer than 10 feet to the power lines. It's right there, by the power lines. We're calling on you to take action, to recall these meters, have an independent investigation, and halt this PG&E assault on our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Good evening. I also want to address the issue of the smart meters. This is the second power surge that's resulted in the explosion of multiple meters in California in the last couple of months. It happened up in Stockton a couple of months ago as well. As Marilyn mentioned, they're also extremely dangerous fire hazards and have resulted in massive property damage and deaths. These meters are not UL approved. According to the Building Code, which is enforced rapaciously in Santa Cruz County by the Planning Department, these meters cannot even be installed in the electrical system in the United States. They are very complex devices, which address a lot of issues in one little package. In order to do that in a stable way, it would require very high level of engineering, and they would be very expensive, and they would be prohibitively expensive, actually, with the rollouts of these things. They cost billions of dollars when they roll them out. They also have the health issues, which are severe. The burst emission of the microwaves from them is very severely damaging to human health. They are a solution that meets somebody's criteria of what they want to see happening in our society. More than anything else, they are designed to gather intelligence on the population. That's why they are so essential and why they have been rolled out with such vehemence, and there's been such a powerful political force behind putting them in. They've been put in now. We need to do everything that we can to take them out. They don't really serve anyone's real needs. They're designed so that they can balance the load, as they say, so that they can have intelligence on everything that's going on in the electrical system. However, they didn't need them before, and now they're in place. We need to do everything that we can to remove these and go back to analog meters before there are more deaths and more severe damage, and before the intelligence that these meters are providing, which is already being used in police enforcement, and it's going to be used in other ways against the population, really starts taking a toll on us in a situation where everybody is already under tremendous financial stress. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council members and city staff. My name is Craig Curtis, and I live on Washburn Avenue in Capitola. And last Sunday, on May 24th, I happened to take an old-fashioned Sunday drive with my dear friend. And we went with the intent to observe some of the other two skate parks here in the vicinity. The first park that we visited was the Jose Skate Park over in Livock, and the second was the Feld Street Park over in the Twin Lakes area. With the observations that we made on the Jose Skate Park, there were six skaters. Four of the six skaters were without appropriate safety gear, namely, no helmets, no knee pads, no elbow pads, and no wrist guards. My second observation was the fact of the profanity that was being used, and one of the, on the rules of the park, which I took a photo, and I took photos of everything, so everything that I'm saying is verifiable. But there's no profanity that is to be used in the park. And they were dropping the F-bomb, as I've been told, is what it's called these days. The third offense that I saw was two of the, of the boys were using those new vaping machines with, I couldn't believe how much smoke is emitted from there. And the fourth offense, which I thought was the most concerning, was the youngest of the six skaters, which I heard with my own ears, and he said it twice. He says, "That guy that was here, he was high, wasn't he?" And the other boy said, "What?" He goes, "The other guy that was here, he was high, wasn't he?" Now, I find that a young boy who can recognize and be able to articulate and identify that some of his peers are on some, you know, some other substance, that is very alarming and shocking to me. Then, the second, when I went to the Feld Street Park, there were, here's this monstrosity of concrete, however, there were not any skaters in that park. So it was a total contrast from the other park. And everyone that was there was using all the facilities. There were children, with adults, all accompanied, and there were, even the adolescents and young teens were picnicking at the picnic tables. And I thought, boy, what a stark contrast. So regarding, I am opposed to the skate park at Monterey Park, and especially with its proximity to New Brighton School, which has the notoriety of being a distinguished California school. And then, and then, so is it really in the best interest to jeopardize the potential scholastic endeavors of our kids? And then I am in favor of the park at McGregor, which it appears that is already semi-under construction. And so, in conclusion, I think that it would be good to have the park at McGregor, but I don't think it's wise to have the park at, skate park at Monterey. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
I'm Helen Bryce. I'm a mother, and looking forward to having grandchildren. I wish for my children and grandchildren a happy and healthy future in Capitola. We've made our home here. We've planned to be here, with Capitola's future. We believe in safe, healthy neighborhoods for all our children. We believe in strong, healthy communities. We believe in parks. But we are opposed to the proposed 6,000-square-foot skate park in Monterey Park. The proposal for this park was created without input from the residents who live in the area. The City Council has already acknowledged that 95 percent of the people living adjacent to Monterey Park oppose the proposed skate park there. So why is the city considering a project that does not have the input or the support of the neighborhood? I feel very strongly that that's a misstep, so let's do something else. Once again, I am asking the City Council to create a Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan process that would create sustainable parks, recreation facilities, and services that meet the needs of all Capitola's residents, of every age. Let's plan the use of our green space and parks. Let's see what we can live with, so that we can all live in a healthy and active future in Capitola. For example, the city held public meetings to receive public input on the Rispen Park Project in February and April, which I attended. When I looked at the plans being submitted to the council tonight, I actually wept. The plans are beautiful, and I... The plans are beautiful, and I was so happy to see that my own suggestion for a specific type of play area for children has been incorporated in the revised plans. A similar nature play area in Monterey Park would be a beautiful addition that would be accessible to all of our children of all ages and abilities. It would be an educational, green, and peaceful place next to a school, rather than something noisy with clickety-clacks and more clickety-clacks next to children's classrooms and bedrooms. Why can't we build the future we'd like for our city's children? We could have a great skate park at McGregor, which is half a mile away from Monterey Park, while maintaining the beauty of Monterey Park. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Would you please state your name for the record, please? So if we have, thank you.
Helen Bryce.
Thank you, Helen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm here on a totally different issue. I read in the newspaper that for the first time in three or four years, we've got some money in the city, and I believe there is a very dangerous situation that has persisted for a number of years. So it's truly not your fault. The situation I'd like to call your attention to is the flume that takes the water from Soquel Creek to the ocean. The inside liner of that flume has broken, has been broken for many years, creating sinkholes on the beach. A liner is absolutely a necessity. And just last year or the year before, we read about the cave-in at, excuse me, at Natural Bridges Park that killed a young man, and one was saved. I don't want to see that happen here in Capitola. And the reason I call your attention to this, the amount of time that the Public Works Crew spends filling in the sinkholes and putting the warning tape around it would be better spent on lining the pipe. I think it should be done in the near future, not in a far-off future. I think we're a hazard about ready to happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the heads-up, Ron. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to address the council?
Hi, I'm Marilyn Water. I live at 218 Unipro Court, and I'd like to address the council and Mayor Norton. You're probably tired of seeing me come up here as I am coming. But I just have a few things to say about the skate park at Monterey Park. I think it's a very bad idea. I've always thought it was a bad idea. I was thrilled when you decided to build the park at McGregor. I was very concerned when you tried to stop doing that for a little while, and now I'm kind of concerned that it's, people are saying it's not a skate park. It is a skate park. It has elements and rails and all the things that a skate park has. My biggest concern is that if we put the skate park at Monterey Park and we have the skate park at McGregor, then we're going to have like kind of a mega skate park town in Cliffwood Heights. And there's going to be a lot of people skating back and forth between the two parks, and it's not just going to be the children from our community. It's going to be a lot of people. And the character of any neighborhood changes when it becomes a thoroughfare for people who don't live there. And it changes in usually not a good way. So that is one of my concerns. The other concern is that Monterey Park is an active park. I'm not sure when that happened, but maybe it always was. I don't know. But there'll be events and competitions there. I mean, I know maybe people say, "Oh, no, we're not going to do that." Well, we said, "Oh, no, we're not going to do that," with the baseball field, but that got used more. And I know the kids need a place to play, but, but that baseball field was not made for hardball, because people walk around the park, and there's houses really close, and it doesn't have the proper kinds of backstops. And they're playing hardball over there right now, just before I came down here. And these things change in their use because they're there, because people want to use them. And then, you know, you don't want to be the bad guys and say, "Oh, no, you can't do that." But when those events happen, I want you to think East Cliff and West Cliff when they're surfing events, because Cliffwood Heights is going to be the capital, or the skateboarding capital of Santa Cruz. And that's, that's not a good idea. That's not what we really want. And I think you need to really, really think about what, what is going to happen when that, when that's built. And, and I'm very frustrated about, by the fact that this was first brought to us as a 2,000-square-foot park, which we all kind of thought, wow, that'd be fine. And then it grew, and now it's, it's really moving, really moving forward. I was also a little upset about the article in the paper about how, you know, when a public park is not a public park. Well, you know, just because you have a lot of money and some influence on the council doesn't mean you can buy a public park. And I feel like that's what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Rich, could you come up and give us an update on the planning process, please, for the skateboard park at Monterey?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. No real updates since the last council meeting. We have a complete application. We are finalizing contracts with some environmental consultants to prepare the necessary SEQA documents. Sometime this summer, we'll have a notice of preparation, public scoping meeting to solicit input on the scope of the environmental impact report. There'll be an architecture and site review committee meeting that's also open to the public. We'll prepare the EIR and then release that for public review once it's been drafted, probably late fall, early winter, sometime in that timeframe.
Thank you, Rich. Appreciate it. Let's move oral communication to city treasurer.
The finance advisory committee meeting met, we've met twice to discuss and give a recommendation, and we will be presenting that June 3rd, I think. So we'll come up with a recommendation then.
Great, thank you. Hey, Christine. Jamie?
I did want to let's down know that we've picked a date for the outreach meeting workshop for the Pacific Cove City Hall site. It's going to be at New Brighton Middle School Performing Arts Center on June 23rd. So that's coming up in a couple of weeks. And we'll be sending out a newsletter to all city residents with information about it and also announcing that it should be in people's mailbox about two weeks prior to the event.
Thank you, Jamie. Council?
Yes.
Michael?
A week from this Saturday, we'll have our Capitola, 10th Annual Capitola Rod and Custom Car Show. Come down to the village, wonderful cars, untold amounts of money poured onto four wheels and, you know, just the love of the automobile. It's a great weekend. It's gentle and beautiful and displays a lot of wonderful things. I'd like to ask Steve a couple of questions if he wants to come on up.
Good evening, council.
Steve, what are the completion, expected completion dates of the pump track, dog park, skate park, and McGregor?
We're still waiting to get some clearance on the soil testing we're doing up there. We have not received that. The skate park will probably be done, the elements in it within three or four weeks. The remainder of it, we're still waiting for the clearance before we can begin construction.
Is that the pump track portion?
Yeah, pump track and dog park portion.
Because it's exposed soil, basically?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And what about the flume? I know we worked, we were working on a grant at some point. We were talking about rebuilding it. I know it's expensive, but...
So we have looked at, I've actually approached two lining companies, it's probably been several years now, about giving a proposal to line it. Lining it is difficult because it's square in shape, and they were not willing to give me a proposal at that time. I've recently talked with an engineer out of Concord who does a lot of pipeline projects, asked them to give me a proposal to determine if we can line it. I'm waiting for that proposal now, and we may move forward with that. As far as funding, you know, we did join the Integrated Water, Regional Water Board, or, excuse me, I don't remember the acronym exactly. But anyway, that has grant funding that is, I think would be applicable to that. So that might be something that's coming up pretty shortly, getting Prop One money to line the flume. But right now, I can't say we could go line it tomorrow because I haven't found a lining company that would do it.
Got it. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question while he's here? What's the, any estimated date of the opening of the Capitola Theater that we're being asked about? They were going to open, you know, earlier, and then it was delayed. Have you heard anything about it?
They have some engineering issues, and it's at the end of summer.
Yeah, I don't track that project.
Okay.
Sorry.
I do. And lastly, I like living in a town where people recognize the importance of having a moment of silence. Thank you.
The city of Capitola is going to have its blood drive on the 5th, which is Friday, June 5th, from 12:30 to 5:30. So it's a great thing to do when a person's in need to have the blood available. It actually saves people's lives. It's really something to consider. It's probably a hard thing for many people to consider because it's, I don't know, it's just something you don't normally do. But a lot of us are going to find ourselves in need of someone's blood, and please consider to give to his blood drive. Thank you.
Good. Stephanie?
We just had one of the busiest weekends of the year, and what's amazing, and I walked that beach, Capitola Beach, two or three times through the weekend, through Monday. It's amazing how well that the people who visit here do take care of our beach. And even with that, the great follow-up of our, that organization, Save Our Shores, is that, that we really have, if not the cleanest beach in the area, certainly one of them. And thank you, Save Our Shores, and thank you for people who visit here and take care of our beaches, too. That's, it was, it was good to see that. Thank you. We move to the consent agenda. It's consideration to approve the consent agenda. Any member of the public can pull any item on the consent agenda, and it will be discussed in public and put at the end of the agenda. If there's anyone who would like to pull an item, please step forward.
I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
No, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we move to the first general government, public, public caring consideration and conceptual design for Rispin Park. And thank you, Mike Arnon and family, for joining us.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The item before you tonight is the development of a public park at Rispin Mansion Property. As you all know, the focus of this project received a Housing and Parks Grant of $385,000, and we're now in the process of defining the scope of that project, and we're looking for some feedback and direction from the council tonight so that we can begin the SEQA review. As you mentioned, Michael Arnon, landscape architect, has taken the lead on putting the project together, and I'll let him do the bulk of the presentation here. I just wanted to mention that we did hold two workshops on this. We received public input at the beginning on what elements they would like to see at the park, and the second one where we reviewed the first round of conceptual plans. So it's quite a large project, quite a few things to look at, and I'll come back at the end and kind of try and focus where we need some direction from you. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mike Arnon.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. It's a, it's an exciting project, and I have a few minutes to talk through this. I don't want to take up a lot of your time because I know how long you guys have to stay here. So if you do want to interrupt and go through questions that way, that's fine, but I'll make the presentation as, as quick and to the point as I can. As soon as I figure out how to work this.
That's the right arrow key.
There we go. Okay. Everybody is pretty familiar with the project, and you've had the drawings to review, so I'll spend just a quick amount of time. The, the site is about 5.9 acres. The Rispin Mansion shown here from the air in the 50s is in the background. I'm going to go right here. This is the original mansion. All the buildings here are the additions that are no longer there, that were part of the convent that was there. The original historic garden is what we were intending to renovate, and, and that's going to be the, the bulk of the project. This color rendering kind of shows again the aerial view. Just to get you oriented, this is, you know, Wharf Road down here, the north end of the park, the south end of the park. This is the crosswalk at Claire's. Right now, you're walking in, you know, roughly through here and down a dirt trail or dirt path that connects. The intent of the design, again, is to restore many of the historical, you know, elements that were part of the garden. These are the, the large eucalyptus trees that are along Wharf Road. These are some of the oak trees that are existing that weren't in the last photograph, by the way, in the 50s. This is the mansion down here. This is some of the foundation area of the, the nuns' buildings that are no longer there, right in here, anyway. And this is the approach from Wharf Road that was the original driveway, which we'll, we'll talk about in a second. So briefly, you know, the main focal point of the park is the fountain and the reflecting pool, the big lawn area, which is the inside of the oval, which is no longer going to be a lawn, but that's, you know, part of the park area. And then the original park had a, well, the original home had a pathway that was a big oval that, you know, revolved around this central fountain feature. So what we are adding, these are close-ups, but the first thing that we're intending to do is to provide a, a safe path of travel. We are changing the entry to align with the crosswalk and open up this vista of the park from outside, especially coming down Claire's. So the path of travel is down this ramp, which is a slight slope to here, to this pathway accessing the handicap. These are two tables that are in here, and then the path of travel continues down the widened walkway. Part of what we'll be doing is restoring the fountain feature, and again, I'm going to talk quickly about some of these things, but inside the fountain, we're talking about having some type of a mosaic tile. This is just kind of a representation of an Art Deco kind of style that I think would be appropriate for it. These are benches that are in various places throughout the layout. These are streetlights, which, again, I'll talk to a little more detail. Originally, there was a sundial here, which is kind of a great feature in the center of the park. We're adding this kind of octagonal walk that kind of goes around it, and this is the place where we thought we could have pedestals for some type of a sculpture garden, perhaps. The path of travel continues down, and basically this entire circle or oval will be accessible, but the, the path of travel that's, that's defined here with the arrows leads to the top of the ramp. And this is now a very wide, just dirt space where people kind of ride their bikes and everything through there and walk up, and we're going to make it into a very safe and structured handicap, you know, ramp. So there's a ramp and a landing, and then a ramp and a landing here. This is also all-new, and it will comply and make it a little cleaner and, you know, wider and safer. This is a 1:20 slope, and then it gets to a 1:12, which is the ADA ramp maximum, and that will lead to the, the base of the park, which is kind of the hairpin turn. From there, there's a, another ramp system that will get down to the lower mansion. While we're at the top here with the close-up, this is the location, at the first public meeting, we had, you know, kind of a mixed feeling about the bocce ball court. So shown here is a 10-by-60 bocce ball court with an accessible path on this end, on both ends. This is a location, this is really the only location for a bocce ball court. It's too steep in other places. We kind of looked over here. It's too narrow or too, not long enough here in this lower section. So this is kind of the, the spot for it if we were going to have that. So we're kind of looking to you for the direction on that one. One of the other features we're restoring is the arbor, which is the, close to the look of the original arbor that was here. And then the next slide kind of gets us a little close-up. So this is the ramp coming down to the mansion terrace. This area is a concrete slab, which was probably the basement of one of the convent buildings, and we thought we could use that as kind of like a place for a couple of tables, like chess tables, have kind of a, kind of a secluded little seating area there. The walkway would continue along the face of the mansion. This is where people would get to actually, you know, get close to the mansion. There's some benches, and these represent trash urns and so forth. While I'm in this spot, I'll talk about the nature play area, and this was something that came out in the... that came out in the second public meeting. The nature play concept, which I'll show you a slide of later, is basically kind of a, a free-form development of, of the space for kids just to have fun. And it's not, there's no slides, there's just things that they make and play with. We thought it would be kind of fun to have some, like, rounds that they could use as stepping stones and walk across and climb on. We also thought it would be interesting to have some of the pieces of the mansion, the relics, artifacts that are in the garage located in here, that they could kind of, you know, work with and look at. Some tables where they could kind of sit and play brush and sticks and, you know, making forts and that kind of thing. That's kind of the concept. So that's where that goes. It's a, it's a really nice spot for it. It's, it's nice, and it's a nice connection to where people are sitting. It's in view of everything. It's kind of a nice area under the oak trees. And these, by the way, are the, these large circles are the canopy of the oak trees. Finally, we come to the other part of the, the mansion. This is the grand staircase, which we will be restoring. And this is the, again, the ADA path will come all the way to the proposed amphitheater area. The amphitheater was, again, a, a staff recommendation and a public recommendation. I think everybody has embraced this as a place for people to have speakers, to have small musical groups and presentations. Docents talking about the history of the mansion, about the butterfly habitat, about riparian restoration, anything we want to do in there. It's a nice spot. Basically, it's about, you know, would hold 40 to 50 people. There's also some bike racks provided. The last close-up view, again, the finishing touch here is, there is this driveway which connects to Wharf Road. This was the original driveway for the mansion. And we, right presently, it's, it's kind of, just kind of a large gravel, large rock path. So we hope to have this available as a pathway. And depending on the grading, we could make this possibly an accessible pathway, but it, it depends on how it's engineered, so. The hatching, by the way, all the area that's hatched is what is from the agreed-upon conservation easement when the, when this project was a bed and breakfast. So this weird little hatching here was actually for, where it's not hatched, sorry, is where this was a ramp, a handicap ramp, which, of course, we're not doing. So some of the, the, you know, conservation area is a little skewed just because the original, the bed and breakfast proposal is what it was based on, and we're not doing that. This happens to be right here is the water tank, the original water tank and storage shed, which, in the proposed bed and breakfast, they were going to move and use that building as a, like an equipment room or something. So that's why that part is white. So, anyway. Again, back to the restoration. This is originally what it looked like, or somewhere probably in the 30s or 40s, what the, what the fountain and the pool, reflecting pool looked like. This is what it looks like now. We hope to, through a series of artisans and craftspeople and tradespeople, kind of replicate what was there. And we found some, you know, the face of the fountain head emitter, for instance, that we found. And these are just some, a lot of views of drawings that I've made to kind of recreate this thing. The reflecting pool itself is two feet deep, and it was, usually had about eight to 10 inches of water from the photographs, and we could tell. It becomes kind of a hazard and, and of course, a water, kind of a waste of water in today's world. So what we're thinking of doing, what we're proposing, is that we build like a false floor, and we create a chamber here which captures water. And this is some kind of like metal sculpture, don't, don't hold me to that one, but some kind of sculpture that we get commissioned to replicate, you know, spraying water. So the mosaic that I mentioned, the Art Deco mosaic, would actually be what people see. And then we would use rainwater that would get caught and held here and then pumped back so the, the, the pool could be six inches deep or so. At night, it would get flushed and it would go back into this reservoir. So it is a way that we could keep the best of, hopefully, both worlds. We could, we could have it be a reflecting pool during the day and have it be just this really pretty mosaic at night. This is just a close-up of how we hope to do that. The pool itself has an area of about 658 feet. A water depth of 14 inches gives us about, you know, almost, well, 4,900 gallons of water, which could either be used for plant material or, again, just to kind of do the reflecting pool. We also propose an idea to have water catchment. This is the water tower and storage building that is just basically closed up now, and there's no well there anymore, or the, the well has been sealed. But we can catch water off the roof of that and off the roof of this and put it into a holding tank and basically, you know, capture about 4,000 gallons of water in a 5,000-gallon tank, which we could use to, you know, again, water some of the plants that we're going to be using. The things like the staircase would be redone. The columns would be, well, not replaced, but recapped, and the stairs themselves would be resurfaced. Actually, we were going to leave everything that's existing on the sides and tear out the stairs and pour new steps. They're in pretty bad shape, and they're beyond repair. So the other thing we're going to have to do for safety is to add handrails. So we've came up with a, as the least obtrusive way I could think of doing the handrails, which is to have them anchored outside of this, this column and outside of the cap to the wall here and have them kind of hanging over. So that's what we're going to try to do. But again, I didn't want to attach things to this because this is historic, and so those posts would be out here and kind of float over the top for the safety rail. That's the view of the second. There's two parts to the staircase, that's the upper section. In order to secure the property at night and keep people off the mansion, the face of the mansion, there will be a fence, and there's a plan for that coming up. But this is basically the idea for the fence where those stairs were. All the historical things we would either mold and recreate or create from drawings. This is one of the nicest views of the mansion, honestly. This is the original balustrade rail, so it'll look like this when it's completed. And this is a pathway that goes behind the fountain there. This is the, what's left of the sundial. This is the only photograph that we have of the sundial, so we're going to recreate this piece, you know, using this photograph and the drawings that I've made here, which hopefully are pretty darn close. Historically, we don't know what the sundial actually was, and we were told by the historian who's reviewing this that we shouldn't try to replicate it to fool people, that, that, you know, it was the original one. So we came up with this one, which is sort of modern-looking and has, of course, the pelican, which kind of gives a little Keptal character. The observation area, which looks down, will get redone. This is the idea for the wrought iron fencing. So we're introducing a new element, and that is the wrought iron fencing. This is a fence that is in Riverside Park in New York City, which was built around the same time, around in the late 20s, as the Rispin being built in 1922. So I tried to come up with a period kind of piece that, that would fit the style. This is the main entry that most people are familiar with who haven't been inside the park. And this will remain, although the door will go away, and that will get stored and possibly be part of our artifact collection. We want people to be able to use this opening to get down to the park. But this section of the wall and entry arch will stay exactly the same. We met with the chief of police, and we met with two different, you know, groups, and we talked about the safety of the park. And the safety concern, obviously, is for people that are inside the park who cannot be seen, or also for the people that have to patrol this to be able to see into the park. So we came up with a compromise solution. The compromise solution was basically, we keep about 16 feet of the wall on either side, so this total section is exactly the same. And then we cut the wall down and recap it to match the original cap. We cut it down to about 30 inches high, and then we have a 30-inch-high fence, which, again, is that same period fence that we had before. Sorry, this is kind of distant view, but this is the entire shot. From the archway, again, here's the remaining sections of the wall. This is the 30-inch-high with the fencing. Then we jump back up. There's a new column here, and then this whole section of the wall gets removed, okay? And that allows us to open up the other, you know, the aspect of the park to view in. On the other side, again, there's a section of lowered wall. And then when we get to this column, from there on, the wall stays exactly the same. So that whole long section that goes north would remain the same. This column would remain by itself, and this section of the wall behind the utility pole would go, come, come down, and there would be a five-foot-high wrought iron fence at that point, like that. And these are removable bollards, so they could get an emergency vehicle in here, but it would prevent a normal, you know, person from driving in there. But it is wide enough for the, you know, pathway to get in. On the other side of the wall, here's our other entry. This, this wall would remain. This would get repaired. This piece would be re-poured and the cap redone. These steps would come out and have new steps poured there. Again, I hate to rush through this, but there's, there's a lot of, a lot of elements here. There's nothing left of the original rose arbor that is on the ground. Everything that is left are, these, some of these columns are in pieces, and they're stored in the garage. I was able to kind of, you know, measure and photograph these, the caps of the columns, so these drawings are recreations, again, of the original rose arbor. This is one of the columns. Now, this is the top, actually, it's just flipped over, but this is what the top of the column looks like. This drawing was just intended to discuss the fencing. The yellow lighting, again, these rings don't represent the, the spread of the light, it just, I wanted to highlight where the lights were. We're using seven lights that would be LED streetlight fixtures. You'll see the fixture coming up. They will have shielding so that the light shines down, and we can block out areas, you know, of the nature thing that we don't want to have the light going into. So we'll try to get a, a lighting design in the construction drawings that reflects that. All the red is the new fencing. The chain link fencing would go away. There would be a gated wrought iron section here and here, and this is all wrought iron to that point. And then we would go to black chain link, which is here. And then the blue, if you can see the blue, is basically the existing fence that would This is an element that will be repeated with different verbiage. This is the sign idea, the signage. We could have these be different sizes. They could be mounted on the building or on the wall in front of the mansion. They could be smaller. They could be, you know, mounted on the ground, depending on what we're actually talking about with the, the wording and so forth. But these would, you know, do the history, the riparian area, the butterfly habitat, the, you know, whatever we want to talk about. Some of the site furnishings, again, we were encouraged by the historical architect not to try to recreate vintage things. So we came up with some, I, I think, nice, you know, again, a compromise of, you know, using something that sort of looks like an old park bench but is a modern version of it. So this is the table, this is the ADA table, and the bench and so forth. The game tables have a little bit of a vintage look, and, and I kind of like this for that lower area. This is the removable bollard. This is kind of the matching bike post. This is the streetlight that we are suggesting. Again, it has the shielding on the top, so it limits the light going up into the sky. It can also limit the light, you know, shining in other directions. So this is the light post that we have in the village now. We were recommended by the historian not to use the Victorian light that's in the village and on Stockton Bridge because she thought it was kind of an indication of, you know, that was the original streetlight. So this is an acorn type of lighting fixture. These are similar to, these are exactly what's on, in the village now. We're going to have a couple of dog stations for cleanup. We're going to have one drinking fountain that will serve our canine friends as well. So the new features of the park, and I'll spend a little time on the amphitheater. This location, which I showed before, is just to the left, as you're looking up with your back to the mansion, to the left of the, the main staircase. This is the lower section of the grand staircase. So this would get partially built into the hill and partially comes out of the hill at this point. But this is the ideal location for this feature. It has the best, best space for people viewing the mansion and, and having a speaker, again, or a musical group, which is why we chose it. This is kind of the side view of how that would work. So there would be basically the one, two, three, four levels of, of seating. Again, I apologize if this is so small, but if you look at this drawing, we encroach slightly with, this is where the amphitheater is. We slightly encroach into the conservation area. Everything that's gray here is the conservation area, which comes down to, the Rispin property, 5.9 acres. The conservation easement is 3.95 acres. The amphitheater is encroaching 345 feet, square feet, sorry. To give you a perspective on this, this room that we're in right now is, is roughly 30 by 60, 1,800 square feet. So about a fifth of this room is what we're encroaching into, 3.95 acres. This is the spot. So as you can see, this, this is part of the conservation easement that goes into here and to here. And the crosshatching is, is where we're encroaching in order to build the amphitheater. So we hope to be able to just trade area. There's a lot of space here, like this thing, for instance, where that proposed handicap ramp was that we're not doing. There's all kinds of space that we hope to trade to kind of make this work. Because, again, this is kind of the ideal spot. Here's a close-up of the nature play area, which I kind of described with some photographs of, you know, the, the free-form nature of play here. One of the things that some of you may have looked at on the plan and wondered what the heck that was, it says dance steps. These are brass, very artistically done brass steps with numbers on them, and they, they teach even somebody like me who can't dance how to do the dance. We saw this in Napa on the sidewalk, and they, I think it was the cha-cha. And the Charleston, I guarantee you, is going to be more challenging than, than the cha-cha. But I think this would be kind of a neat feature to be adopted by, you know, an artist to, to be able to do this. And of course, the Charleston, we picked that just because it's, you know, from the era of the 20s. So I think it'd be a lot of fun. It was that or the tango, I'll let you guys decide. This is, we're getting towards the end here, but this is that lower area where the, the basement is and where the gaming tables would be. And on this wall, there's a, there's a concrete wall, it's about five, six feet high here under the ivy. And also this wall over here, which is probably 10 to 12 feet. We thought this would be, again, an ideal place for some types of murals, where we could have, you know, an artist commissioned to either historical murals or something, you know, that reflects the, the nature. The other concept that we had about the building itself is I, I feel that the building is kind of flat. There's, there's not a lot of depth, especially from a distance, the way it was painted with windows. And so we talked about having some kind of a mural theme where we might, where people coming up from the river, for instance, would see people in the windows here. These are, there's a couple standing in the window, or a band playing in the, in the main, you know, area where the, probably would, would have had a band there. So a candelabra or a candlestick here towards the end, and there's all kinds of different spaces. These are all windows that I think should have at least a darker tone so they, they give the building some kind of a relief. It's, it's just, it's a little flat in here, and I think architecturally, it makes it a lot more interesting. This is, again, a couple dancing on this balcony next to the band. So the next section, you're probably not going to be able to read, but it's, it's just printed. But the, the final planting and irrigation things will be done as we get into the working drawings. But we did come up with three plant lists. One was an historical list that Barbara Burney created back in the 90s. We'd like to use that palette of plants towards the, near the historical elements to kind of tie it in. The native plant list will be used more in a, in a demonstration garden. There's a couple places where we could have oak understory gardens and just demonstration of native plants. The butterfly list will be used in areas that are bordering the, the butterfly habitat. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about the plants, obviously, because there's a lot to discuss, but we do have some pretty thorough lists on, on all accounts. At this point, I'll, I'll turn it back to Steve, and I, again, I didn't mean to rush through it, but if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So as I mentioned in the introduction, tonight, we're looking for defining the scope of the project and kind of, so we can move forward with the sequel review. Kind of identified here the key items that we'd like to get the council's direction on. The first is the Wharf Road wall. Obviously, as we're proposing, it's kind of a compromise between those who want it taken down and those who want it to remain. We, we spent a lot of time trying to figure that out. The bocce ball court, there's, again, that's kind of received a split support during our two workshops, whether it should be included or not. So final direction on that. The location and style of the security fencing, I think that's kind of self-explanatory. Amphitheater location, obviously, we are working, have been in contact with personally, the organization that was responsible for probably getting most of the environmental easements, the conservation easements there, about trading some areas and hope to move forward with that and identify those benefits as we go through the sequel process. Last one I put in is Last one I put in is, I do like the treatment that Mr. Narne knows recommending for the reflecting pool, and any other issues. So, if we keep, our object, again, is to have a final scope of project as we finish here tonight. So, with that, should I make questions to staff at this time?
Those questions, staff will take those now. I want to go directly to the public with this. Is there questions? Okay, we'll open this to the public to make comment. Thank you. Please step forward.
Hello, it's been a long time, maybe about 20 years since I've been up here. My name's Barbara Burney. I live on Grace Street, within walking distance of the mansion, finally. So, I've written to staff and the council and mayor regarding my history with the project. So, yes, since 1987, I have been, this is on my bucket list, and the only reason I got involved in the bed and breakfast part of Rispin was in order to keep the park open, get a public park up here, so I'm really excited about this. And, of course, as you also know, I was classmates with Mike Arne and landscape architecture program at UCSC, so I'm very happy to see him involved in this. As far as the wall goes, I was a holdout originally. I said, "No, no, that wall has to stay," but I have since seen the light and realized that was the private, you know, residence of Rispin, and then, you know, pork layers was there, and the wall was perfect for those two uses of the land. But, at this point, we want to bring the public in. I mean, when I had the gates open when I was working with the community, the folks that had to work off community service, the DUIs, they were chipping mortar off a brick that we were going to use in the pathways. The gate was open and it probably almost caused all kinds of accidents because people were dying to get in. And I think having the wrought iron on top of the low concrete wall, as Mike has designed it, is brilliant, and I really hope that that can work out. And I'm sure the planting will change because, again, it's not plants up against a wall anymore. It's going to be, you know, inside-outside kind of thing. I did mention, and I know it was mentioned about the well, I really hope that something can be investigated. The well was capped off, but I have no idea even back then whether it was done because there was a problem with it, but if we have a city-owned well that we're not investigating, you know, it just seems in these times it would be something to find out about. But, I love the water retention idea and the way that Mike has planned for the fountain. I do hope that there will still be water, I think you mentioned, in the upper part recycling, but not down into the reflecting pool, and I think that will work for, you know, all the different needs that we have. The amphitheater, absolutely. That was something Mike thought of a long time ago, and I think it's perfect for this place. Benches, I think Mike and I talked about, there were a few places that they need, and that's icing on the cake, I know, but when you look at the pictures under the arbor, there were benches, and if you're coming up that walkway, you may need a place to sit down close by, but my big concern, I'm not going to get married when I turn 70, but if I were going to, I would want to be married under that arbor, and to be standing at a bocce ball court, to have my picture taken, just ain't going to work. There is no evidence of a bocce ball court ever being on the mansion, and in a historic garden, I mean, please. I think the bocce ball court should be in Jade Street Park, and it's a perfect place for it, but not on Rispin grounds. This is a passive recreational area. I think the kids' area is great, and I think I ran out of time, didn't I? Okay, well, anyway, I am really excited about it, and I do hope that we can go forward with as much of your resources as you can possibly muster.
Thank you, Barbara.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Richard Laffey. This is my first time looking at the details of Rispin Park, and I would just like to hear some discussion on three items. One is with the, it sounds like a seasonal reflecting pond. I think I heard that the rainwater is going to be the source of the water, and a couple things about that. One is, I'm thinking, isn't there going to be some dry period in between time and, you know, is, have we addressed, and I'm sure they have, the mosquito, you know, issue between the wet and the dry? And the other thing is, seems like that'd be a high maintenance item because of all the overhead foliage. You saw all the pictures that, of course, the Rispin mansion is not being maintained right now, but there's a lot of foliage around there, and I'm just concerned about the maintenance of foliage on a wet surface, because on a dry surface, it's easy to remove. The other thing I was thinking is, did I see that there's decomposed granite used for the accessible path of travel? I'm a little concerned about that because of my experience over at Monterey Park, the decomposed path out there is not an all-weather path. It marshes in the wintertime, and actually marshes when we have water and they're watering the lawn, so I was, did I really see that right? And the last one is, the way this is kind of hidden, in a sense, I'd like to hear from Chief Escalante about any, what his feelings are. To me, this looks like a playground for truants and vandals, but, you know, I'd like to hear from Chief Escalante about it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else like to address the public, please?
I attended both of those meetings, and originally, I didn't like the changes in the wall, but I thought that was a great compromise, so I can live with that. It looks good, especially the part where we kept part of the original wall so you can see what it used to look like. Bocce ball court, well, that was one of the first things I brought up, but if they don't like it there, they can put that over on Monterey on the left side of the park. That'd be a great spot for it. That spot isn't even used over there. And, let's see. The amphitheater, that'd be pretty cool, and the only thing I'm upset about is the reflecting pond. I don't want to see mosaics that kind of takes away from the orig, I like original equipment, but whatever you guys work out, I'd like to just see it stay unused rather than changed, just to look at the original rock in there. Anyway, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Hi, my name is Brian Sprensock, and back in the 1960s, the city of New York gave floor credits to skyscraper builders who were building huge buildings in New York City if they agreed to put public parks and public squares on their property. So, they would get to build more floors if they created a plaza. And as a result, about 15 big plazas were built in New York City. And then, several years later, the city looked at these plazas, and some of them had failed and some of them were successful, and they wanted to know what made public places fail and what made them successful. And so, they commissioned William White, who was then a professor at New York University, and he and some of his graduate students did a several-year-long study of these sites to determine what made urban spaces fail. And, the result was in 1965 or '66, a film and a book called The Social Life of Small Urban Spaces. You can go on Vimeo and see the film for free, it's an hour long, but I'll save you the time. Basically, what makes urban spaces succeed is their relationship to the street. Ultimately, that's what they discovered. Places that are cut off from the street fail, and places that have a relationship to the street succeed. We can see that right here in Capitola. Perry Park failed. Perry Park failed because it was isolated, had no relationship to the street. So, people who have positive social things to do in a space are afraid of a place like that, they abandon it, and then people who have negative social behavior take over that place. That's what happened in Perry Park. Whereas, right up the street, we have Noble Gulch Park, which I go into all the time. There's no graffiti. It has tables and chairs and benches, just like all the other parks, and it succeeds because it has a very strong relationship to the street on two sides. For me, the wall is a problem because it destroys the relationship of this space to the street, which is why it's been used in negative ways so far. Imagine if between the esplanade and the beach in Capitola, there was a nine-foot concrete wall. And imagine a meeting like this where we're trying to figure out what's wrong with the beach, why isn't anyone going there, why is there so much graffiti there? And we're talking about the chess table and the amphitheater that we're going to add, but no one is dealing with the nine-foot wall between the esplanade and the beach, and that's the problem that's happening at Rispin Park. I'm in there a lot, and I think you need to consider creating a relationship between this park and the street. The street is the lifeblood of any park. It brings people there. It becomes a source of pride. People point it out when they drive by. If you can't see it, you don't have that, and so that's why urban spaces fail. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. It's your chance to speak for the Rispin. Okay, Mike, would you come back up to the podium and maybe we can discuss some issues between the council and our, who would like to start out on the council?
Well, let's talk about the bocce ball court. Remind us of what the discussion was at the smaller meetings about that. That wasn't part of the original concept, was it? Was it added?
It was something that we didn't show, but on the original drawings, we had talked about, and we wanted to show physically, you know, the size of it to see how it could work. So, the discussion was kind of split. I mean, there were several people who were very enthusiastic. Nobody was highly, a few were opposed, but it wasn't really strong. So, it was kind of a mixed feeling on that one.
How much room does it need?
A regulation bocce ball court, if I'm correct, is 10 feet wide by 70 feet long, so this one comfortably fits in there. It's 60 by 10, but there's an area, you know, around that you have to be able to access it to walk up and, you know, around the sides of it and so forth, so it takes up, you know, quite a bit of space beyond that.
Don't you need benches or other areas for people to put their equipment or clothes or jackets or lunch or whatever they have while they're there? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, there will be benches in the near proximity, but we didn't have like a locker room or anything like that. Let me see if I can get to the other, go ahead.
Because there is a small bocce ball court at Tradewind's Mobile Home Park. That's right behind the clubhouse. It's very nice. I'm not sure how much it's used, but that's a kind of a small area that actually would fit anywhere other than this, if we didn't want to put it here. That kind of a sized area would fit anywhere. It's really pretty small.
It, to me, I mean, it does seem like it's more appropriate at Jade Street or Monterey Park where there's more of an open space and it's more of an active area. I mean, again, we showed it because we wanted to have a discussion.
Yeah. That's all on that.
Josh?
I'm just trying to understand the architecture of the area. So, there's quite a few remnants of the structures the nuns built, I guess, for their cloistered areas?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine. I'm just trying to understand the architecture of the area. So, when I walk through there, I see a lot of remnants, as you referred to, of the structures that housed the nuns, I guess?
Yeah, but most of the stuff that's on the north end, the northeast side, are the remnants of the nuns' buildings, yeah.
Is that in a protected area? I forgot how it overlay on the crosshatched area.
No.
It isn't?
No, it's in the area that was to be developed, you know, as part of the bed and breakfast.
Okay.
And beyond that, too.
I'm just wondering if that's potential for things, potential site for things.
Well, I mean, in addition to the gaming area, we were going to use that one area because it's fairly unsafe. We were going to actually use some of the soil that we're going to be moving and have like a sloped oak understory, you know, native oak, you know, understory garden. That's what we were thinking of for basically this area right here, 13. This is the large wall that I pointed to towards the end. These are the old stairs, which are not safe, which would be fenced off, and this is a small foundation area that we are utilizing, but...
I'll start, I'll have the discussion. First, I want to say I'm glad that Mike Arne is running this project, too, okay? Thank you for all the work you've put in. It shows. I'm glad all the input from everybody that's in there. It's, there's a lot of issues that I'm sure bantered back and forth, and generally speaking, I love the plan.
Thank you.
I want to weigh in on the five items. That's what our, Steve wants our five items, so I'll just cut right to the chase. With a little disclaimer in it is, I don't think, I kept hearing you saying sometimes, you know, using pieces, and if you don't have the actual one, you use something else. So, the intent in my mind is just not to replicate the Rispin exactly as it was. It's to make it something as close as possible, but yet the flavor of the Rispin Park. So, with that being said, I want it to be a place that the public uses. I mean, you know, Dennis said a long time ago, he just wanted to tear the fences down, have people go in there, and I said, "Well, we have to fix the ADA things first," so... And I think we should make a commitment to spend some money. I know we have some, but it's going to take a lot more to finish this project. I want to see people in there, which means that I want them to be doing things, things like the amphitheater, that makes people want to come in there, whether we have small concerts. I don't think there was an amphitheater originally on the property, but it's something that's going to enhance the property, it's going to bring people in there. We want people in there that are doing things that we want them to do so the park's used because that will make sure we don't have the people that we don't want in there doing the things they're not doing, hanging out. So, with that being said, I was a big fan of the wall. I wanted the wall to stay as it was. I've now looked at the plans, and I think I can evaluate and say that the compromise is what this is, looks fabulous, okay? And I believe, I'm going to say that part of my thing is, I believe the police chief is okay with the wall, so I thought somebody said that that was, had gone through the department. So, I like the compromise on the wall. It gives the privacy, but yet it's open, you can see it. I don't feel that we're going to lose that portion of making it accessible. The bocce ball court, passive sport, you know, it's something that's, I used to live in San Francisco by Stern Grove, and they have bocce ball courts right down the street there, and it's just, it's a great feeling, you know? I mean, they have like 10 courts there, I think, but I mean, just to have one court, I don't plan on getting married at the Rispin either, but, you know, if I did, I don't think I would mind the bocce balls. You can put them away for a second, it's going to be fine. It brings people in there to do something that's, that I would want to see being done in the park. I mean, I see people playing chess, your vision of chess, bocce, kids hanging out, it just sounds good. So, yes, on the wall as it was proposed, yes, on the bocce. The reflection pool, you started talking about this, and I think about a, here's a bed and breakfast in San Francisco Bay called the Two Brothers Island or the Brothers Island, and what they do is they serve bed and breakfast all year long, and they have a big dish, I'm going to call it for lack of a better, about as big as this room, and they collect water all year long, store it underneath, and that's how they provide, because there's no water on the island, and they do that. They save the water, they collect it from the rain, and that's how they, when you go stay there, that's what you drink. So, this concept of building this false bottom to collect the water is brilliant, okay? And if you can augment that with the water tower or any other water collection, I mean, you can get real creative with ways to collect water, okay? And so, I think that's a great idea. I think the reflection pond is essential. I mean, to say, I know we're dealing with this water issue right now, and the way we're going to do this is, you know, it's a reclaimed water, it's reused water, it's something like that, so I like the idea of the reflection pond. Let's see, somebody mentioned about the well, and I'm not really big on going for the well because I think we need to leave the groundwater to the water districts. I don't want, I think the idea is for, to not to have wells, okay? We need to manage water countywide, not citywide. With the steps, I'd rather have the Charleston than the tango. I think that the tango's a much difficult to dance, so I think go with the Charleston. The amphitheater, the amphitheater is fabulous. My only concern on that is, I hope we can horse-trade some land. I was going to have, put Lauren on the spot with the legal thing on whether, what our ability to do that, but I'm not going to do that. Sounds like Steve's got a plan. I would love to negotiate. I hope we can give, 345 square feet is about as big as this area right up here on top, so I would hate to see that kill the deal because I think the amphitheater is just a great, great thing. Did I get all five, Steve?
Yes.
That seems great. All the other items, all the other components, the lighting, as long as the light fixtures aren't ones that the seagulls hang out on the top, that's the only problem they had in the village, but it seems like there's been so much time and effort put into this, it just looks like a fabulous plan, so my hat's off to you.
Well, thanks very much. Yeah, you know, the two workshops were extremely helpful. We got great input, we got great, you know, ideas from people that, you know, things that we hadn't thought about or, you know, considered, and it was a very, it's been a great process, and I just can't wait to have it happen.
You're the right guy for the job, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Michael?
Could you bring the list back up? The issue list?
Hold the list. Okay.
So, I'll go down the list. I was set to be adamant about the wall being tall. I like the compromise.
the compromise, and I really like what Brian said. I mean, that the idea of making this urban space socially acceptable really rang true. That was some tremendous information. So the way as designed, I'm for it. Bocce ball court, you know, despite my Italian heritage, I'm totally ambivalent. Don't do it, do it. You can stick a bot, people will play bocce wherever the hell they want. You know, don't break your back trying to fit a bocce ball court in. Location and style of security fencing, please God, don't put any more chain link fence on this property. I don't care what color you paint it. If you need fencing to, you know, cordon off areas, make it wrought iron or don't put it in at all. No, I don't care. Black chain link is still chain link. Come on. Amphitheater location, looks great, love it. Use of reflecting pool, love it. I see no other real issues. I, let's see, no chain link. Oh, one last issue. The black, modern benches and tables. I understand the historian's approach. It's the tail wagging the dog. Stop, stop stopping us from doing nice things. Put period pieces in there, please. Put benches that reflect it. We're not going to confuse it ever, from now to the end of time, with what was originally there. Let the historian know. Trust us, we're not going to be confused. I understand how they like to differ in the addition of a home, the place where the addition is done, slightly. That doesn't mean you put hideous, modern benches in a beautiful setting like this. So if you do anything, make it charming.
Yeah, I didn't quite follow, you know, that whole strategy.
I followed it because I've followed it before.
Yeah. But if we go that route, we'll certainly come up with things that fit the period. There are, the original ones that we had in the first presentation at the public meeting that we had, had the original vintage things. And then when the historian saw it, she said, oh, yeah. So we already have things picked out, and I think you'll like.
They were pretty nice.
Okay.
That's all.
Josh?
And this is the first time I've discussed something with Rispin associated with it that didn't run my blood cold and make me chills and feverish. And this is a happy project. Thank you very much.
So I went to two public meetings and actually leafletted around the area to try to get people to participate. And I was amazed. I didn't see anyone that I talked with or leafletted come to the meeting. So I was a little amazed. And I may be wrong because I didn't know everyone in the room. But I certainly thought people that lived around there would have some really distinct opinions and thoughts about the area. But one of the things that did come up, especially in the Mobile Home Park area, was, there's a lot of kids there, was using that as a place to go to, you know, a play area. So they envisioned walking across the street. And so some of the components that you have in there I really like, especially the play area. And that came from a suggestion of someone at one of the meetings. I really haven't been very convinced that we need to take down the wall, quite frankly. I'm not one too swayed by things that I don't know aren't there. And I walk through there a lot. You know, I walk around the city a lot, actually. And, you know, I take particular note of what I see because I'm looking for everything that everyone claims is there. And I walk up and down the SoCal River to find where this stuff is that is supposedly there. And I don't find much. I mean, I find a little bit up near the Highway One, and on the other side of Highway One, I find a little bit of stuff that, you know, maybe the police should investigate. But I haven't found any camps. I haven't seen, I think, near the river view side, on that side of the river, I saw something happening that was probably a drug deal, but I don't know. I didn't go talk to the people. I haven't seen people hiding in the bushes. I haven't seen people sleeping there. I haven't seen anything like that. And so I think there's a component of fear that may not be warranted. I think in a sense, we live in a society right now where we are given to a lot of elements of fear, insecurity. It's so easy to be swayed by what we think is out there, and then to make decisions accordingly. So I haven't really been in favor of taking down the wall at all. But I've been talking to a number of people, and that's my personal feeling. And that's how I live my life. But I've been talking to a number of people, and I had a very interesting conversation today with some people at McDonald's. I went into McDonald's, which I don't normally do in the morning. And who did I find but Tony and Catherine?
Oh, my.
Yes, how did I find them? So Barbara, I think you've been talking with them because, oh, yes, because Catherine would say pretty much something like what you said. And so you know when a conversation ensues, ideas go back and forth. And I think Tony got us in the vein of, well, think about that Rispin area. It's going to be something that's going to be part of a, it's going to be a new part of Capitola. When the new library comes, this is maybe the whole idea of making it connected to the street can be expanded. We need to connect it to the library. So there's going to be a lot of people coming there for the library, which is going to be bigger. It's probably going to have a lot more facilities for kids. The Rispin is now going to have some facilities for kids, and there's going to be a lot of parents that are probably going to take their kids across the street after they get a book. I don't know, but that's what my parents did with me, because the parks were usually with libraries nearby. So I'm in favor now of taking that wall down partially. But with the idea that we're connecting to something that's going to be another building there. I don't know what the design of the library is going to be, but maybe there could be some connection to that at some point. So the people actually realize that this is going to be a new center of Capitola. And I've often heard that, you know, the city is divided by SoCal, but right now, there's going to be two new features, an improved feature, or two new improved features, whatever way you want to look at it. So I will go along with recommending your recommendation. And I did go to the two meetings, and if anyone went there, I think they would be very impressed with the attention to detail that you took, you and your staff. And so I agree with Ed that we're lucky that you designed this, that you came up with this plan. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been a pleasure. I mean, I don't want to take up a lot of time here, but I mean, this has been a project that, you know, has been close to my heart for a long time. And it's, the more I'm there, it's an amazing space, and it's the center of where the whole city came from. You know, the vision that he created there in that mansion of what Capitola, you know, would eventually become is something that we should honor. And I'm just excited that we have the opportunity to do that. So thank you.
Stephanie?
Well, it's amazing. It's amazing and wonderful and exciting and thrilling, unbelievable, kind of unbelievable. I agree with all the previous comments. I think that the wall is a great compromise, and I like the other aspects. I like, I agree with Mike's comments. When I saw that garbage can, just like the one in the village, I, oh, no, those are really ugly, I think. So I think we can do better with that. And I don't like chain link fencing and the bocce ball. My first thought was, if people use it, if it'll get people in there, great. But if nobody ever uses it, then it's a waste of space. So I don't know. I'm not in touch with that community. If you think, we think the communities would use it, the bocce ball community would use it, then great, because that would bring people in there, which is what we want. Because I think it's still going to be a very, very passive park for a long time. There's not that much in there to do. People still walk through, you know, they go to the library to get a book. They're not going to necessarily go to the library and go across the street. And so, but you know, in time, it all will work, and we can have things, you know, that'll make it more of a focal point for people. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to plan the library birthday party this summer, and just to bring a little attention and focus to that area, so that people will start to think of using both of them together and that area. And when we get the traffic improvements, they'll be fabulous. So I'm up in the air again about the bocce ball court. If we think, if we think it's going to be, would be a good addition, would be used, it's very historically inaccurate, but as far as planning a park, if we think it would help, I don't know, just, maybe we'd have to check with that community first, or have they already expressed a lot of enthusiasm? Do we know?
There were several people that came to the meeting. And by several, I would guess four to six, or six to eight people that probably
That are active players?
There were players that wanted, you know, expressed an interest.
Okay. I'm going to turn a little circle here. Brian, thank you for your statement. And I'm going to cite another urbanologist, Jane Jacobs, to follow up on your statement. She states that the safest communities are communities that have eyes on the street, and the combination of residential, commercial mix and be able to look on it. And that's true of parks or any open space plans we have. And so the argument probably follows through to the sightline, to the street with that. But it's more important that, as Stephanie just mentioned, is that we get an active use in that park. I mean, people have got to be going through that park. They're going to be doing, they're going to be doing activities within that park. A vacant park is the most dangerous. And that's what we experienced in the past when we fenced that thing off. It became more, it became more of a public detriment than it was when it was wide open. The, if you go to San Juan Batista, and you go to the old mission settlement there, and this was probably true of all the missions in the chain at one time, and they built big stucco fences all the way around their public area. And maybe it was to keep, it's either keep the Indians out or in. I don't know what their purpose was. But they had a purpose to that. And the purpose of the Rispin, if I understand this correctly, that wall that was there, was that that used to be the lumber route going to Capitola War from Santa Cruz Mountains. They would come down. That's what came down. That really wasn't like a public road there, what it was. It was just the lumber wagons bringing wood down that would be sent to San Francisco after the earthquake or whenever they're using the wood. I'm indifferent about taking the wall down. I think that that is an important historical feature of that whole project. It's really as important to me as the mansion itself. It was built in the same time. It's one of the last standing remnants of that. When I drive down Warf Road and I see that wall, there's something beautiful about that wall. Even though I can't see into it, I want to know what's behind it. Yes, I want to, I want to think in between the spaces. When I come down, I come down Claris, and I look straight ahead through the pond, and I see that thing. Magnificent. So you still have the ability with that wall staying to get vision line into that, into that property. So I'm probably alone standard here, Mike, our community. I want to keep that wall. I think it's an architectural feature that's, you can't duplicate it. And I think that the Secretary of Industry standards would agree with me, that that, and it is, that's part of, that's part of the historic mansion. And this is on the national register. This is not a local historic. This is a national register, and that wall is part of that national register. And I think that's going to be a little problem taking it apart.
Can I respond?
Sure, Mike.
I was literally on the fence, no pun intended, because I, you know, there's a certain quality of the secret garden being inside there when you're inside there. And then I understand the necessity of having the safety, because a lot of people didn't, don't feel safe when they're inside there. And people on the outside, you know, should be able to look in. What sent me to the compromise solution, or in favor of that solution, was just that so many people that I talked to that live here said, what's behind there? I mean, they'd lived here for 30 years, and they had never walked past the wall. And I think, I agree so much with that, with the theory about having the connection to the street. I mean, we have, the topography of this site makes it difficult for the mansion to be seen. And the wall, obviously, being significantly higher, and then somewhere between five to eight feet high, nine feet in certain parts, makes that even more complicated. So I think it's important for people to see what's there and to have the connection visually. I mean, driving down Claris, we have an opportunity to open that up and have it just look straight into a very public park. I mean, if you see, and I understand the historic thing, the other aspect of this is the historian who reviewed this did not have a problem with the wall, because we're not eliminating the wall, we're reducing it, and parts of it we're actually maintaining. So she didn't, you know, have an issue with the wall compromise solution that we came up with. So I think the ultimate thing is the safety of the people who are in there and the policing of the park. I think the lighting will help, but I think we have to be able to see in and invite people to enjoy that space.
There is a sense of tranquility when you're behind that wall. It's much quieter. It's more serene when you're inside that grounds than it will be when it's open.
Well, I took a decibel meter, and I went down there. And you're right. When you, I took the meter, and I'm not a sound engineer, but I stood on the sidewalk, outside of the park, outside of the wall, and I took a reading. I went in and I stood behind the wall, and I took a reading directly behind the wall, two feet from behind the wall. And then as I got farther away, 10 feet away and 20 feet away, and then to the top of the slope, the sound level, you know, diminished. You know, you hear, the sound is blocked immediately behind the wall, but the farther you get from the wall, the sound level goes back up again. It's just how sound waves work. So in theory, I think it's more psychological than physical. Part of the wall that is there is not there by the reflecting pool. I mean, there's no wall there, and I don't think it's significantly different, but
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
We differ on this one.
Yeah. So on the site furniture, I agree with my two colleagues on that, that we get forced into this on historic preservation of our houses, where we have to change materials to show that there's a different period of some, big mistake, big mistake. And we've done it for years. I think that this is one point here. There's nothing wrong, Mike, staying with the period of the architecture of that dwelling. One idea I had was, is you showed that one picture of the stump of a column. You said it was the top turned upside down. Yeah, you showed it there?
That's the rose.
What a wonderful bench that is. I mean, if you could take, if you have any more of those, put them out in a different place in the property. You can go sit on those little stumps, you know?
There's a lot of stuff in the garage that we hope to use, the bricks for one.
Put them out there. Let people sit on them. Let kids climb on them.
Yeah, that's part of what we were going to do in the nature play area.
Great, okay. You know, I think it's a great project, Mike. I think you've done a great job with it. And it seems to me, and I'll go through and correct me, council, that where we have consensus, it appears that we have consensus that the Warf Road wall will be staggered, dropped down as proposed. Is that true?
Okay.
I have a question about that.
Okay, let me go through the list, and then we'll come back to it, okay? The bocce ball court, I kind of like people using, doing uses out there. You know, you want to put people in there. And where it's at, it's right in the middle of the upper thing, bicycles going by back and forth. Bocce ball courts are not ugly. They're, you know, they're like a sandpit or something. So I personally fall in the category, I could accept that. And so we may have a split vote on that. I don't, you know, it's
Dennis, could I make a comment?
Sure, one second, Ron, and I'll let you do it, okay?
Okay, talk about you.
Okay. The location and style of security fencing, is there agreement there that, it's done correctly. And Michael suggested that there be no chain link fences.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah, we're in agreement with that.
That was just for cost, you know, trying to use the black chain link was just to save money, but
Yeah. Yeah, the amphitheater, it seems like we have consensus there that that's where it should be, and that's what the design should be. The use of a reflecting pool and fountain, very creative. I mean, I hope, you know, I think a maintenance may be an issue of that one, so make sure that it's not a high maintenance issue with public works. You know, I just go back to this thing of having eyes into that, into that park, the people using it, it's going to be a much safer place. And so we have, it seems like we have consensus. Ron, you want to make a comment on the bocce, please?
Just so everybody can hear me, up the mic to the microphone.
Okay.
I play bocce ball.
I play bocce ball in the city of Santa Cruz every week, except one Wednesday a month when we have a meeting instead of bocce ball. And we play it over at Bocce Cellar. And the courts do not have to be 10 feet wide and 60 feet long. In fact, the courts at Bocce Cellar are four feet wide. And I would say there may be a few feet less than 60. They work adequately. The whole secret to bocce, having good bocce ball courts, is the levelness of the court. The second part is that the rails or the sides of the court be higher than the center point on a bocce ball. Otherwise, the bocce ball just runs right down the side. I wanted a clarification tonight, because I approve of everything you're deciding on, and your consensus was a great idea. I heard from Mr. Armoni tonight that the part of the wall near the grand entrance is 16 feet. Is that 16 feet on each side of the entrance? Or is it eight-foot wings on each side and a total of 16 feet, and then the wrought iron fence? I just wanted that for clarification, because I went to the first meeting and was out of town for the second meeting, so I don't know what they finally decided. But I 100% agree with all of you. I 100% agree with all of you. If we can make it look like some of the materials that are used in the park match what the mansion once was, that's the way to go. And thank you for this extra time, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And I'm trying to get, by the way, they did away with the original Portuguese and Italian sign at Bocce Cellar, and I'm trying to procure it, to be honest with you.
Mike, you want to respond to Ron's question, maybe?
Yeah, I'm, on the sides of the arch, after the lower, there's two columns, there's a tall column, a small column. I think it goes 14 feet, I think I said 16, I can't remember, but it's 14 or 16 feet in each direction.
Okay, good.
I have a question of you. Can you go back to a slide that shows the front with the wall?
The front of the wall?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hold on. No, I have to say something in agreement with Dennis said. One of the first things I saw when I came in to Capitola was that wall and that gate. And I was immediately intrigued, and that's one of the first things I did, was to investigate that place. And so, it's hard for me to believe that people have been here for how many years and haven't investigated. I just, maybe it's just me. So, no, I mean, we're, it shows it-
The whole span?
It's full length, yes, please. Yes, something like that. Now, the thing that I've been wondering about is, it's a sense of symmetry, or in this case, asymmetry. So, why have you decided to not take the wall down, all the way down to the end? In my understanding, because when I walked through there, there's another path, and I've been told by, I think, Ron, just recently, or someone, that that was actual, the real entrance, you know, further down there. And maybe I don't have all the history correct, but I use that path every now and then, too, because I'm wondering what's going on down there. So, that wall continues for, I don't know, another 15 or 20 feet, and so-
Yeah, the original, this column right here-
Which column, okay.
Is a new column.
Yeah, but I'm talking about way down-
This way.
To the left, yeah.
Oh, to the left.
To the left.
The other way, Mike.
Oh, to the left, yeah.
The solid section.
Right.
Yeah.
So, we're opening it up on one side, but on that side, it's, there's a lot of scrub, and there's a path, and, you know, the whole issue still is before us of trying to create security or connection and such. So, that's my connection, my question, basically. Why not that other section?
Behind, well, behind this wall, and this continues for quarter ways, then it stops, and then there's the opening where that other trail comes down.
Right.
Behind this wall, on the other side, this is basically seen from the street, you know, you're seeing it from the street. From the other side, right in here, it starts to slope way down. So, on the other side, this wall is probably like 12, 13 feet high. And so, it just didn't, and nothing that we're doing in the park is located behind that wall. The only thing that's behind this wall is really the ADA ramp that connects everything. So, the main activity spaces are roughly in here.
No, you're right, and then it comes-
That's kind of my, how I thought through it. The cost of taking this down, again, you know, I have to not only design this thing, but we have to come up with a budget. So, the cost of taking the wall down, you know, the more we take down and have to repair and put the fencing in, the cost goes up. So, I tried to keep the section where all the activity was, and all the views of the mansion, you know, intact, and leave the wall high over here.
Okay, well, I don't want to engineer, but it does, I mean, the path comes up, again, you know, behind the wall. So, there is a dip, you're right, but then it also comes up. So, I was just wondering, that's all.
Okay.
And my earlier question was, was basically, that whole rough area where the old foundations are?
Right.
Right. Do you see any future use for that? I mean, it seems to me that's a wider and a larger area, that a lot more can be done there.
Certainly, there could be use for it. I mean, one gentleman at the, at one of the meetings mentioned having, like, if we did have a small concert or a ceremony or something, that those areas could be used as, you know, vendors' areas, if we had a vendor who, you know, was selling whatever, so that it could be used for that. I mean, structurally, I guess we'd have to investigate exactly what we have with those walls, and they seem, they were left there just because probably they're supporting the hillside at this point. So, yeah, I think there's obviously some uses, it wasn't anything that we really-
Explored.
Pursued.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thanks.
Make a motion.
Well, I want to just make a comment first. I just want to talk about the fountain for a minute. It's hard to talk about a fountain in the middle of a drought, but there was significant support at both of those meetings to try to keep a fountain, if possible, with water, with water moving, so people could see it. And you did a really good job of explaining, you know, what it was gonna look like. But if there's any way, now or in the future, that, you know, we could keep that kind of an aspect open for a real fountain, with recycled water, of course, people would love it. People would love it. And, you know, it is original, and, you know, I know we're gonna have a sort of a pseudo fountain, you're gonna do the best job in it, you know, it may be terrific, but I just don't want people to look at that and say, "Oh, really? Couldn't we really have done, you know, something else with some more, of a, more of a water feature in it?"
Well, there's two separate things. Originally, the fountain went into the reflecting pool. We're not actually doing that, because the water crossed where the pathway is, and we didn't want to have water and people walking and slipping and that liability. So, what we did was, the water that we store or catch from that tank, you know, the water catchment from the roof of the well, that would feed, more than feed, that fountain, and that would just recycle. And when it runs out of water, then it's just an art feature, but I think we'll have plenty of water to run that thing all year long. The reflecting pool captures its own water and recycles that water. So, it's two separate things that will look like the original thing, but it won't quite have the link.
But wasn't there flooring and the water was down below?
Yeah, there's a-
So, people aren't gonna really be able to step in it, or feel it, or touch it?
There was a trough, and it's hard to, it takes me a bit to get to these slides here, but there was a trough that brought the water from the fountain, it's way up
I just wanted to spend some time on it, just because it's a really, really important feature-
So, whoops.
...of the park, and for the public and for the future. People are gonna ask us about it, and, you know, they may question it and say, "Really, is that, is that what you wanted to do?" I mean, I think it's very clever design.
Thanks. So, this, this, right here, there's a little fountain head, and it came out, and, you know, there's some kind of a plate over this. So, the water from this pipe came from the water tank, the water tower that was over there. And then it spilled into this basin, it spilled right there into this basin, it spilled here into here, and then dropped down and goes through this trough. There was, this is about eight, six feet wide, I guess, and then it spilled into the reflecting pool. So, that's how it all worked. In this design, there would be a drain right here, and then we would plumb under here, so we don't have to rip out any of the existing stuff, and go around the back, and then recycle this thing. So, this would basically regenerate itself. The other one would fill from here, and then there would be a pipe feeding this right here that spilled in, you know, into the reflecting pool. So, it's almost the same, except we wouldn't have the liability of having people walking over the water and the maintenance of that particular element, which I could see-
The water will just go right into the reflecting pool?
Yeah, there'll be a pipe that comes up here, and they'll be, it'll be pumped.
Okay, I thought you were gonna have some sort of a flooring, and it was gonna go under there, but it's gonna go on top. So, there'll be people really touching-
Well, the water that you see will be on top of the fake floor. The water that is feeding this thing, the tank, the reservoir, will be underneath-
That's the important thing. That's why I think people are gonna want to put their hand in there.
There'll be real water.
Have a thing about fountain, you know?
They will be, it'll just be six inches-
And stick their feet in, or whatever, and if they can't-
But no liability, we won't be a big fall.
No, I think that's great. That's, no, that's great.
Well, anything over 18 inches deep would be a swimming pool, and we'd have to fence it in. So, we're gonna go with four to six inches.
I just want to interject at this point, I'm sorry, maybe I should have stepped in earlier. I want to be clear here, this is the conceptual planning phase, so all we're doing at this point is forwarding a project for secret review.
Yeah, we're going after the public, yeah.
Right, and I would expect that during the EIR phase, that there's gonna be some other tweaks that are coming along. The project hasn't been fully designed yet, so there's gonna be these levels of details, figuring out sort of the nuances, how this is gonna work. In addition, there's been some concerns, I think there was mentioned, the staff report expressed by Save the Habitat, so some conversations there. So, do keep in mind that you're gonna have another crack at this. Before we fund the project and approve it, this is really just kind of the project that we're gonna go out and go to the public with.
Ed, would you like to make a motion?
I'd love to make a motion, that we approve the project's scope with all the input that it's got tonight, and initiate staff to start a secret review.
Would you consider making the motion separate for the fence than the rest of the motion?
I thought we were in agreement on the fence.
We're not.
Oh.
Oh, you mean the wall, are you talking about the wall or the fence? Do the walls, separate motion?
The wall.
The wall, you said fence, we're in agreement on the fence. No chain link.
Right, that's different.
Right.
The wall, I thought we were in, I thought we were in agreement on the wall.
Let's just leave that out.
No, evidently, we want a separate vote on the wall.
Just separate vote on the wall.
Okay, separate vote on the wall, okay. Yes, I, yes, I would.
Would anyone like to second?
I seconded it.
Okay, we have a motion.
And we are asking to use different furniture on the site than was shown on the plans.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and that's-
What about the bocce ball?
I'm gonna defer to the Art and Cultural Commission input on the furniture.
And then the bocce, the bocce ball?
Bocce ball's in.
Bocce ball's in, okay.
And, you know, the dimension, as was mentioned, it doesn't matter whether it's eight by 50, you know, I get that. But to have it, you know, it doesn't have to be a legal bocce court, okay?
It'd be wedding size.
Just wedding size.
I want to see Ron over there using it.
Yeah. So, that's my motion.
Okay. Got a motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Would someone like to make a separate motion on the, on the wall?
I would, I would motion that the wall be treated as designed by Michael Arnon.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote against.
Oh.
I want, I want full size.
Oh, so you're against?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Somebody find us some money?
Yeah, we should have a donor for that pond. That's the first one right there.
Well, and then we have, we have the memorial-
Having their name.
We have the memorial bench program we can revive also. We have, we can revive the whole memorial program for other aspects of the park, too, to the people who would like to honor. There's gonna be-
Rest of the memorial, what's, what's called in there?
This is gonna take more than $100 a brick, just want to let you know that.
I know, I know. People are getting very excited about this.
Especially we don't get any of the money.
There wasn't any tombstones on that property, was there?
Moving on.
Okay, thank you.
Rissman, great view.
Okay, we have a presentation regarding the draft climate action plan, and request for initial public review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. By way of background, the state of California over the past decade has passed several legislative and executive acts aimed at improving our air quality and reducing the effects of climate change. Most notably, Assembly Bill 32 of the California Global Warming Solution Act was passed in 1998, which requires the state to reduce its greenhouse gas emissions to 1990 levels by 2020, and for each city and county to contribute its part towards that goal. Senate Bill 375 was subsequently passed, the Sustainable Community Strategy. Some of you may be familiar with this, as the work that Ambag did recently on its Sustainable Community Strategy. And then finally, Executive Order, signed by then-Governor Schwarzenegger, set a very ambitious statewide target to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to 80% below 1990 levels by 2050. Independent of state actions, I think everybody recognized the city of Capitola has generally been on the cutting edge of environmental sustainability issues, and that was included in our general plan as one of the guiding principles, to embrace environmental sustainability and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to prepare for the effects of global climate change. That theme was threaded throughout the general plan. Many of our goals and policies are focused on water and energy conservation, waste reduction, alternative transportation, and overall sustainable development. And perhaps most importantly, the general plan did include a mitigation measure in its EIR to prepare a climate action plan with 18 months of adoption of the general plan. So, for the benefit of the viewers at home who may not know what a climate action plan is, it's a long-range plan, typically 20 to 30-year planning horizon, aimed at reducing agencies' greenhouse gas emissions. It's currently used by over 400 California agencies, and they use it to outline their various reduction strategies. Greenhouse gases, of course, are vapors that trap heat in the earth's atmosphere, widely accepted by the scientific community, is contributing to climate change. And the most common gases that are greenhouse gases are carbon dioxide, methane, nitrous oxide, hydrofluorocarbons. And one important thing to keep in your mind is, when we're talking about reducing greenhouse gas emissions, we're talking about metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents. So, each type of gas has a different measurement when compared to carbon dioxide, and we're looking at very large quantities. Primary sources of greenhouse gas emissions are transportation and mobile sources, energy consumption that we use at home to heat and cool, solid waste to transport it, the decay of the materials, and then finally, water and wastewater to move the water and treat it. So, the draft climate action plan that we've presented with you this evening is basically laid out by providing our existing or baseline greenhouse gas emission inventory, a forecast of our future greenhouse gas emissions, and then we establish our reduction targets that we hope to achieve, and then various reduction measures that we intend to implement to meet those reduction targets. In 2000, Ambag prepared a 2010 baseline inventory for us, outlined the greenhouse gas emissions we currently experience. Based on that analysis, we currently emit 88,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent greenhouse gases per year. The biggest culprit there is transportation, no surprise, that's fairly typical in California, followed by energy, and then minute contributions by other sources. So, the forecast scenarios that are in the climate action plan are basically broken into two categories. The first is a business-as-usual forecast. This assumes that there's no federal, state, or local GHD reduction actions that are taken, and the future growth in existing emissions will continue as they are today. The other is an adjusted business-as-usual forecast. This does assume that federal and state measures would continue to be implemented, but that the city or local agencies would take no actions on their own. Looking at these models, under a business-as-usual projection, our greenhouse gas emissions would actually increase by 2% and 4% between 2020 and 2035, whereas when you account for state and federal reduction measures, we would realize an approximately 12% reduction by 2020, and a 20% reduction by 2035. And again, that's without taking any local actions. The draft climate action plan establishes a 4.9% reduction target for the city of Capitola to achieve by 2020. This number is based on the state of California's reduction target that they need to achieve to comply with Assembly Bill 32. Currently, as you recall in the previous slide, we're not only on track to meet that standard, but to significantly exceed it. The 2035 forecast is not quite as promising. We target a 42.9% emission reduction. This is, would be to achieve the executive order, which requires us to cut our emissions by 80%. We're on track to substantially meet this target, but we would fall slightly short using today's current technology. In 2050, the outlook's a little more grim. Current legislation will require us to achieve an 81% reduction. The California Resources Board is already opined that they believe that this is an unrealistic target for anybody in California to achieve using current technology, that there have to be transformational technology changes in order for that to be achieved. The real meat of the climate action plan is our proposed GHD reduction measures. This is the things that we intend to do, the actions a city will implement to reduce our emissions. It's basically, or it's generally based on voluntary incentive-based measures, but in order to show quantifiable reductions, there are some mandatory measures in there as well. Again, the categories for reduction are transportation, energy, water and wastewater, and solid waste. As you might expect, the area where we can gain our biggest reductions are in energy and transportation, and much less so in water, wastewater, solid waste, and other contributors. Just to give you a flavor for some of the examples of the reduction measures in transportation, there are a lot of measures to promote alternative transportation modes, cycling, walking, carpooling, bus rail, increasing the uptake of hybrid and electric vehicles, and then a big one to support and implement, the Monterey Bay Coastal Rail Trail. In terms of energy, encouraging more solar through streamlined permitting, pre-wiring requirements, financing assistance, amending our green building program to make it energy efficiency standards higher, improve weatherization, lighting, heating, cooling, and another big ticket item is supporting the Community Choice Aggregation Project, which, if implemented and successful, could see the region meet its greenhouse gas reduction targets in and of itself. So, that's a real big one. Terms of water, wastewater, we're basically looking at increasing our water conservation and efficiency, more drought-tolerant landscaping, water fixture retrofits that the water districts currently require, more recycling, rainwater catchment, those types of measures. Waste, Waste, there is, uh, current state legislation that requires Capitola and all of California to reduce its solid waste by 75% by 2020. So that's gonna be a big target to achieve. Construction waste reduction, food waste, increased composting opportunities, and those types of things. One, one common theme throughout all these measures that you'll see in the cap as you read it is we're really trying to increase the education and awareness of the public of opportunities to do more to reduce their emissions or carbon footprint, financing opportunities that are out there, alternatives, and that's gonna be a big part of the climate action plan. So when we look at our emissions reductions that we project through these various actions, we're projecting an 18% reduction by the year 2020, which would exceed our 4.9% target by 13%. And in 2035, coming very close to the 42.9% reduction, and then significantly falling off by 2050, when a lot of the measures that we are proposing, there'll be a diminishing margin of returns while we're still experiencing growth. The one good thing to keep in mind by exceeding what our reduction target is, it allows the city some flexibility. We're not necessarily required to implement each and every reduction measure in the plan. Certainly, there's gonna be some considerations of cost-effectiveness, resource availability that the council and into the future will wanna consider, so this gives us flexibility. And in that regard, I think we can treat those reduction measures as a menu of options, where we can pick and choose the things that we think work best in Capitola and give us the most bang for the buck. Nonetheless, I think it's important that we make near-term progress to meet the long-term targets, so that in 2034, we're not looking at a target that we just simply can't meet with a little bit of time remaining. This is just another quick look of the business-as-usual, adjusted business-as-usual, and then the adjusted business-as-usual plus the local measures, how those stack up. Our proposal is shown in green, the far-right column. There are a couple of issues that you should consider when discussing the climate action plan. The first is when we've talked to our stakeholders, mo- most have suggested to us that we develop a voluntary incentive-based climate action plan that doesn't regulate compliance. Nonetheless, there are some other stakeholders and some of our members on the Commission on the Environment that would prefer to see some more mandatory measures, things like a point-of-sale energy retrofit requirement that may be able to be financed through a HERO program. Some of the pros and cons of mandatory measures, certainly a pro is you probably realize some greater GHD reduction, but it would result likely in higher development and resale costs, and probably would require some additional resources to administer, monitor, enforce those types of mandated requirements. Incentive-based measures, on the other hand, reduce GHD reduction potential, and some of those cost in our shift to the city rather than homeowners, property developers. We're picking up the tab to do some of the incentives, education outreach, things to make up for those savings. And then finally, fiscal considerations. Implementation of the climate action plan will require city investment. There's gonna be capital improvements, things like sidewalks, improved bicycle facilities, infrastructure, that we'll wanna prioritize and spend more money into those improvements, as well as incentive-based programs, things like fee reductions, if we offer rebates, things of that nature will require money, and then education and awareness programs will also require staff time and money. The good news is, we believe we can implement the cap as is proposed with our existing staffing resources, with, of course, some capital monies to develop projects. So the next steps, with your authorization, we will initiate the public review of the climate action plan in June. We'll make some edits based on whatever we hear tonight. Some of the requests from the Commission on the Environment to provide some more implementation details, we'll develop an implementation strategy to attach to the climate action plan as an appendix to give readers a better idea of the work ahead of us and how we propose to accomplish it. In July, we will start the 30-day public review period, August, respond to comments, make any necessary revisions, and then hopefully, late summer, early fall, we'll initiate adoption hearings before the Planning Commission and your council. Recommendations, the Commission on the Environment did recommend that the council initiate public review with some revisions to the document. Planning Commissions concurred with the recommendation, and staff also concurs and ask that the council authorize us to initiate public review. We're available for questions, thank you.
Questions, staff?
What did, what did Placeworks do, and what did Green Links LLC do? What, what did they, what did their subcontractor form?
Placeworks was, is the new name for the company formerly known as DCNE, who you all know helped us prepare our general plan, continues to work on the zoning code. They also are the lead on the climate action plan. Green Links was, is a company, a new company that was formed by Chris Santieri. He used to work at Ambag, he did all their energy modeling there. We needed modeling support, it was not in the DCNE contract, so we contracted with him separately to develop a lot of those models.
What about fireplaces?
So it does not address fireplaces in the climate action plan. We did have a goal in our general plan to discourage wood burning fireplaces.
So do we need to talk about that here?
If it was something that the council had a desire to reiterate, either to discourage or if they wanna take a stronger stance to prohibit them, we could certainly do.
How much pollution is, is it causing in Capitola? Is it an issue here? That's what I'd like to know. So maybe you can get back to us maybe about that, and, I mean, if it's significant, we should look at it, just as part of this, if it's not, you know.
I don't think it would make a measurable difference. I mean, you could measure it, but again, we're talking about metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents, so you'd need a lot of wood smoke to produce a, a metric ton of carbon dioxide.
And I think in general, the, the focus on the wood burning stoves primarily from an air quality standpoint, and the climate action plans primarily fall, focused on GHD reductions, so, you know, there, there may, there may be a conversation about, you know, not having wood burning stoves, but it's, you know, probably more of an air quality conversation.
Well, that's what I would just want to, it's, are they, they're working in tan, there's, they're separate, but yet they're working together, and yet, but we're handling them separately, sort of. Okay.
So I think when you came to the COE, you, you had a list of things you're already working on, which seem pretty impressive, so I guess that does deal with the plan, and do you have any updates on that that you could give us quickly to give us a sense of what you're doing already?
Yeah, I have begun drafting implementation strategies, as I mentioned, would be added as an appendix to the climate action plan, and in there will outline the things that the city has accomplished since our baseline year of 2010, you know, our plastic ban, our enrollment in the HERO program, the solar roadmap, retrofit requirements for high-efficiency water fixtures, zeric landscaping. There's a lot of things that we have done, that we're doing, that we're gonna continue to do, and then there's a number of near-term items that we intend to, you know, accomplish in the next six to 12 months. And so we're gonna try to outline all that, so that the reader understands this is not something we're just starting, but it's really the next step in a, a longstanding commitment of the city.
Continuing. You also mentioned funding as a potential rollback, so there must be some funding sources out there that you're working on identifying? Just curious about some of those.
Well, there are, there are some grant opportunities out there. We, we did, as you may recall, amend our green building education fund to help assist in paying for climate action and, and water conservation measures, so there is a little bit of money there, it's not a lot, it's not the kind of money that we can build sidewalks with, but certainly, we can use that money to supplement education and outreach and some of the smaller ticket items.
Okay. I feel education is very important because it could make aware, an awareness of things that the public can do, so I think that came up in the COE as one of the goals, to work with the city on that particular. And the HERO program, I'd like to talk with you more about that, I think there's a lot of potential there. One of the things, just so the council is aware of this, is that because we have this funding mechanism, we could actually use that funding mechanism as a way to implement on a house-by-house basis some of the improvements that would actually help reduce greenhouse gas. The city of Berkeley, Rich has already investigated this, has already sort of taken on a, a task, I guess, that was sort of controversial, but I guess it's working in Berkeley. So if you sell a house, have an inventory of the things that can actually be done. So the things in the house that you could do right now to save on your energy use, that inventory would be done at the point of sale. So that could be the first step. The second step could be to try to make a program work that's a good policy program that would actually cause some of these things, or help some of these things to actually happen once they've been identified. So the things that could be identified in an audit such as that would be the types of things that this plan actually has in it right now, some of the things that we would actually like to do on a house-by-house basis.
Rich, what, what keeps this, what mechanisms in this document that keeps it from being a shelf sitter? What, what forces us to go back to this document for use in?
You know, I think it's, it's, it's like a lot of these documents where it really does require, you know, the city leaders and city staff to stay on top of it and implement it. We have every intention of doing that, you know, and I think that it'll be spelled out a little bit more clearly once we get the public review draft out there and some of the implementation strategy, but, you know, it does require us to be mindful of it and to keep it in our, the forefront. One of the things we will do is give you updates probably every three to five years on the progress, how we're doing towards meeting our reduction targets, some of the measures that are working, maybe aren't working, shortcomings, successes, that type of thing.
Well, Capitola isn't a biosphere. In other words, we're surrounded by urban areas and all sides, so how do we, how do we describe our, our role in this thing as compared to what the county should be doing or what the city of Santa Cruz should be doing? Is this, I, I know they all have to adopt the climate action plans, but certainly, we should be concerned about what the county of Santa Cruz does with their document, because we're, we're more influenced by them than we are by ourselves.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great point, and even beyond the region, you know, it's, it's a global issue, so I think it's something we, we do have to be cognizant of what our neighbors are doing and try to cooperate. We do participate in a climate action compact in the Santa Cruz region, it's city and county of Santa Cruz, Watsonville, Capitola, UCSC. So we do meet on quarterly basis and exchange ideas and try to collaborate to the extent we can.
Is there any members of the public who would like to address us on this issue? Amy, would you, would you like to address this?
No, I think we've done it all the time.
Okay.
I'm just still in the process of how COE can help.
Can, can I, can I, and then going back to the council, can I, can I make a small suggestion here, is that, just because we created this document, we're going in the public process, it appears to me that it needs to be a, a, a long-term document, in other words, it has to be looked at on a regular basis, and maybe one place that, that the Commission on the Environment, a role they can play with is, take from this document and give us a one-year plan. Give us a two-year plan, and give us a five-year plan. Come back to us and say, okay, these are the things that we'd like to initiate from this document in the first year, in the second year, in the five-year. Give us those things, then we got something to work towards. If you hand us this whole book, we, you know, we don't know where to start, you know, and maybe this would be helpful to staff too, and, and.
I think staff would be happy to, to work with the Commission on the Environment more. We are trying to, you know, specify the timelines a little more, there are timelines in the document, but some of the information isn't assimilated really well, so we, that's one of the things we're gonna try to do, is put it in one easy handy-dandy place to reference.
It would make us, it would make, it would be helpful to us in making decisions on transportation issue, sidewalk improvement, bicycle, pedestrian, safe routes, those kind of issues. With them, who had backed from the Commission on the Environment, what, what should be our priority the first year, or the two, second year, or maybe even five years out? So.
So to begin with, I can't, I can't address that, because, I'm sorry, I wasn't really prepared to speak. So, Mamie Forrest, and I am on the Commission for the Environment, we did talk about this just yesterday, and we created a checklist of the things we thought were most important, and prioritized it, and are coming up with a plan, we're in the process of coming up with just that plan. What we can do, and especially what the commission can do to assist the city staff, so that these things can actually happen and they don't just get put up there and put on a shelf. Kristen is probably a better person to talk about that, because she's been working on it for longer, but that is in the works, so it is.
Maybe you could come back to us as a presentation to council at a time when you have formulated.
Yeah, that would be great. We, like I said, we just started yesterday, and we came up with the, with the checklist. We've, we've been prioritizing and reprioritizing and kind of narrowing it down, and it, we, we had a terrific meeting yesterday, so we're all very energized and ready to go. And Stephanie, I'd really like to thank you for your appointment of Kai, KK, he's terrific, and he's a great addition, and we are, like, we've got skills, we're ready to help, and we're ready to, to start stepping in and, and doing what we can to assist.
Thank you.
I understand, we have another commissioner in the audience?
Yes, Peter.
Peter, yes, Peter Wilk, he's the other newest one that Ed appointed.
Hey, is there any else in the public who'd like to address us on this issue? If not, we will return to council for deliberation. Is someone?
I have one other question.
Okay.
Question to staff. So in the environment of government regulations, there must be carrots and sticks, and I was wondering if you could elaborate on that, you may not be prepared, but do you have a sense of, from the state's perspective, how they would be viewing us if we performed or if we didn't perform? Do we get grants available if we're really working on things, you know, which is the normal thing? So I was just wondering if you could elaborate on that.
You know, certainly, I think having a compliant climate action plan does avail yourself to some grant opportunities that are out there. I'm not aware of, you know, the state taking any action on any jurisdiction up till this point for not complying with their climate action plan. I, I, so I really don't know.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion from a member?
I, I move to adopt this climate action plan.
We're not adopting it, we're just.
I mean, excuse me, to put it forward to public review, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Second.
A motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
If, if someone wants a copy of this, the climate action plan, should they, where would they come to, Rich? Jamie?
We'll have copies of it on our website, copies of it at the front desk, copies of it at the library, it'll be, you know, the climate action plan and the secret document will be readily available.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move to item 8C, which is consideration of establishing a city outreach committee. Jamie?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this topic came up, Councilmember Terminy brought this topic up, and we were considering an outreach plan for the Pacific Cove City Hall site that was prepared by a subcommittee, mayor's select subcommittee. Obviously, it wasn't on the agenda at that point, so we've agendized it here for this evening. Briefly summarizing, we have two commissions right now in the city, five committees, two ad hoc committees, and one mayor's select committee. In general, the committees provide some sort of recommendation or advice to staff or the city council, the commissions generally have a role that's outlined in the municipal code, and in some cases have decision-making authorities. That would be the Planning Commission and the Art and Cultural Commission. I tried to look around for some examples from other cities, there are, interestingly, in LA, they use outreach committees quite frequently, but really around kind of these neighborhoods. The neighborhoods in LA are often as large as our city, and so as they try to have some sort of neighborhood cohesiveness, they'll have an outreach committee for a neighborhood. Menlo Park had an outreach committee that I found as well, but it looked, frankly, when I looked at it, a little bit more like our GPAC, it kind of guided a visioning and outreach process for a specific plan focused on El Camino and their downtown. I found a, did find a perfect example, though, and it was in Dillingham, Alaska, where they have an outreach committee that conducts informal meetings on neutral grounds to hear residents' concerns and answer questions. I'm not really sure what partitioning areas in community to deal with issues would be, but that was part of their mission statement, so. So there's no staff recommendation on this item, it's council discretion, obviously, each committee takes, doesn't necessarily cost the city money, but it takes up staff resources, so you just have to decide what a priority would be to do this or not. And your options for this evening would be to take no action at this time, wouldn't preclude future action, or if you wish to establish a new committee, would direct us to do so and identify the responsibilities, the size and composition, and outline a little bit of a reading, regular meeting schedule, so we could bring this back in a resolution in a future meeting. So I'm available for questions.
Questions to Jamie? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address this issue, run the council?
Yes. I just wanted to say that the CVRA, which is Capitola Village Residents Association, has 320 members, we have emails for our, for our membership, and we're very happy to pass information on to our members that the city's field is important for the, for their, sorry, for their citizens to have, in this case, this would just be village residents. And Steve Jesperg has made use of our, of our membership in that way, he'll send me an email and say, can you pass this on to the CVRA? And we're happy to do that if it seems like something that our, that our membership would be interested in, and that would promote, you know, communication between the city and its residents. So I just bring this up at this time, that, you know, you are welcome to contact us if you have, you know, something that you, you know, want your citizens to know about, and we'll pass it on to them.
Thank you, Margaret, appreciate that. Back to council? Back to council, discussion.
I don't, I don't want to set up a committee unless we know what they're going to do, what their purpose is, and what the length of time is. Like, you know, it's hard to ask people to do something. So I'd say, you know, if in the future we need one, let's, let's talk about it then, but we don't need one right now for anything in particular. And we have a couple openings on the museum commission, and that's what I'd like to focus on right now, is trying to fill those with good, qualified people. And if we, we need a committee in the future, we can talk about it.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing this to the city council. In one sense, I don't think this goes far enough. When I ran, I'll just quote from my statement to the public, I said, "I will work for open involvement on civic issues, seek your input, and push for expanded public forums on critical issues." And that resonated with many people that I talked with when I knocked on the doors of the residents of Capitola. This was at the time when there was a proposal to sell City Hall, make it into a hotel, and rebuild the hotel at a different place on the land that we own. And this sort of shook up a lot of people, you know. It was something that, in a sense, came out of the blue, and a lot of people said, where was the discussion? Some people said, do I want another hotel? You know, people started talking about all the issues that you would normally think about, parking. Some people on this counter here said, where are the water meters going to come from? I mean, also, also many different issues. And, but the main one was, I wasn't involved in the discussion before this proposal was made. So I don't think this goes far enough. I too looked through, spent some time trying to find other committees like this around the country, and I did find the one in Juneau. A lot of the committees that I did find were for specific purposes, just like Capitola has, G-PAC, finance, police, all sorts of different things. Reinvigorating New Orleans after Katrina, you know, for various specific purposes. So that says, why do we need a committee like this? One of the things I heard a lot, and I think all of us have heard this many times, but depending on our views, we may not take the same, come to the same conclusion. But in general, it is a continuous task. It's an ongoing task to involve people in their government. It is a never-ending task to try to make, in an adequate way, the case for why this issue is important. It is the responsibility of government to keep on that task. And there is a letter to the city here, to the councilman, saying that it's also the city council's job, and I agree with that. I hope that we agree with this committee, and I hope we expand its purview, actually. I would like to have this expanded so that a mechanism can be brought forth to the city council so that on important issues, the public is not left out in the cold, so to speak. So there's an aspect of letting people be informed about what's happening, but on important issues that are a little bit larger than a committee like this, this is a committee. And what I mean is, I don't think three minutes of discussion is always enough for adequate public engagement. So that's how I'd like to expand this proposal. Thank you.
But Jacque, do you want to form a committee now that may not have a job for a year or two?
Well, that's a good discussion. And, you know, I, I don't necessarily want to form this committee right now. I would like to have that discussion. And I think there's good reason for a committee such as this. And the reason why I brought up these other committees that I, I've, I've found on the web, which is my main source in this case, is sometimes they, they sunset it, you know. So I'm not sure where to go with this, as a matter of fact, but I do believe that there has to be a continuous effort to involve the public in the business of running this city. It's a never-ending thing.
No question about it.
No question about it.
No question about it. My, my, my only question is timing, and I don't see it happening right now because we don't have an issue right now to bring people together over. If we had an issue, we had something we wanted them to work on, that's the time to do it. But if we don't have an issue, it's, it's not, doesn't make good sense to form a committee to sit and do nothing.
Okay.
If there's nothing to do for a while. They're, they're not going to want to do that. That doesn't, that doesn't, that's not very good, doesn't look very good on our part to, to, you know, set up that kind of a, a committee. They're going to say, what are you, what are you doing?
Okay. I, I see some validity in what you're saying. A lot of committees and a lot of groups happen because there's an issue. And if there's no issue, then there's basically inaction. So that's why I like this proposal in one sense, because at least it's starting to do, deal with one of the aspects, and that is actual programs that we could start taking advantage of to get the word out to the citizens of Capitola about what's happening here. Okay?
Okay. Other councilmembers, comments? Michael?
Since my name is bandied about in the staff report, that's okay, that's okay. It's, this is sort of what I was looking for. You know, I was, I was more looking for an as-needed public outreach. But more importantly, the, the committee that was just formed and came back to us for the report, they did what I was looking for, which is give us an outline. That outline can be used to reach upcoming projects. And with regard to the hotel and people accusing us of clandestine planning, I, I don't know how many times it's been said up here, but what we did at that meeting was what they wanted us to do, was we were bringing an idea forward. No one was breaking ground, no one was doing anything clandestine. So if you, I don't understand how you can chicken and egg this, you need to bring it before the public. And they say, well, you mean you've been thinking about this before bringing it to us? How do we ask them their input before we start thinking about something? So work on that, get back to me. And, and finally, you know, I like Margaret's idea. I mean, you can push a button and reach 250 residents. That's pretty powerful. So we need to keep building on this, put it aside for now, and as needed, form committees, but constantly put tools in the toolbox like the CVRA so that there has to come a point where we can push some buttons and reach half the community. It'd be great. So I have no burning need for this committee to be started. It's just good to keep it on our radar and keep this kind of idea, these kind of prospects ever-present in our discussions.
Well, I don't have to think too far to come back to you on this, but my sense is that a lot of people have lives to live, and they're not always paying attention to what we're doing, quite frankly. They're not. And the beauty of an effort to actually be more effective in reaching out to the public is that, that re, that number of people that actually know what's going on here is greatly increased. And so that's why I like this. And there's going to be people that will never really care, but if we make more of an effort, then that actually, there'll be more people involved. And that's why I like this. That's what I'm saying. And that's why I also said it's a never-ending task, you know. And the thing I was actually looking for is if we could, and I like the mayor's committee, you know, when it first came up, made sense for that particular issue. What I'd like to see is something that's in our code so that we could turn it on when we need it. Okay? So there's something, a mechanism that we could say, oh, we have this mechanism when there's important issues and we want to follow the procedure. We have this mechanism to amp up our public outreach and codify it. Make, make it so that it's there and we could turn it on when we need it. Okay? And we don't have it all the time, we don't need it all the time. And like I said, I looked at a lot of these committees around the country, and they sunset. They're there for a particular purpose, or they sunset, you know. They have to have some purpose, and I agree with you, Stephanie, on that.
Well, and that's why I wanted, want to do a newsletter more often. A newsletter twice a year doesn't do enough. We have the opportunity to educate our voters every month if we want to, or every other month if we want to, on all kinds of issues. And I know it's expensive, but it's a great tool. If you have an attractive newsletter that, you know, people are reading, you can get all kinds of stuff out to them. Or if they call you and complain about something, you can say, it was in the newsletter, you know, we've had it in there. You know, you, you have the opportunity, it's great. I totally agree with you. We need to do lots of public education, but let's start with the newsletter. Let's add some more money to the budget when we have that discussion, and do that more, more often, because that'll, that'll, that'll really help a lot. But come, but work on a proposal for what you're talking about and bring it to us sometime. Put your, you know, put your ideas together and, and bring us, bring us an idea.
Well, that's what this is about, is to have staff come back with an idea.
Staff come back.
Well, I, I think we, we're part of that discussion, obviously.
Yeah, I just don't like to always give staff new, new jobs all the time. I mean, if we have ideas, let's, let's flush them out ourselves and bring them to each other.
Then let's have a work discussion, a work meeting.
It seems that there's some consensus here that, that there's not a need to form this committee at this time. If there's an issue comes up, then we can, we can talk about it. We, we have committees now that do not have tasks. Traffic and circulation really doesn't have a task anymore. And some people think it's maybe disformed, maybe it should be a more citywide other than just the village. So, so those, those, when you have committees that do that, they implode. In other words, you don't give them a task, they, they fold. Commission on the Environment recently came back to life just because they had tasks to do. You know, I, I'll tell you, I deal with a number of different government agencies, and I'll tell you, there is not an agency, at least in this county, that has better access to government than the city has right here. There's not one. And I'll tell you, I'll give you an example, is board supervisors in each one of their districts have 250, 56,000 people that live in each one of their districts. Answer, answer to one person. We have, we have 10,000 people here, we've got five council members, we have a city manager, you can walk into his office almost any time you want, not open your door to him, almost any time. We have staff that's accessible, that responds the same day that you ask them to do something. Steve's famous for that. Planning's famous for that. You can walk into our planning counters at least half of the day. There's no other jurisdiction that gives you this kind of freedom and public access. If, if, if you want to be involved in government, there's a number of committees and there's a way, ways to do it. Yes, information like a newsletter may be helpful to us in the long run, but this is, this is a very, very open program that we have in this city, the way it's set up and the way we have government set up here. And I, I haven't heard people complain about not having access to government. Maybe they complain about not knowing what the issues are and what it are, but, but basically you, you have that mechanism and ability to go into that. So if someone would like to make a motion on this thing, we'll, we'll...
I just have one more comment before I make a motion. Just on committees in general, you know, you brought up the point about some committees aren't functional, and I think a good example was the Commission on the Environment. We, we had kind of put that on hold for a while. And what I heard when Amy was in the crowd is that there's a couple new people on there, and I think that helps a committee. When new people come on and they bring, you know, some new information, different perspective, and we don't have that on a lot of committees. So I think that we should, maybe we just need to look at our committees, like you mentioned, the parking commission, you know, it doesn't really have a task. And before I would want to have any kind of new outreach, I think what, what was successful about the mayor's committee was, by and large, it had a lot of new, new people on it. We get different perspective because we, we don't always want to hear the same perspective over and over. It's like, so my one hesitation is, is that, you know, if we ever did create another committee, have to really make some effort to try to reach out to different parts of the community and, and get more people involved. But I, I think I kind of agree with what the flavor is right now. I don't think we have a need for any committee at this time. I'd just like to ask a question of the council here, though. In the future, are there some ideas bouncing around here that are intriguing in terms of more or amplified or better public engagement?
One of the things we need to do is, instead of if we have, if Monarch Cove comes up, not just follow the 300-foot rule or 500-foot rule or whatever it is...
Yeah, there you go, that's a good example.
...do all of Depot Hill. If we have someone, next time we have something at the Rissman, do a larger mailing, at least try to do a larger mailing. For any other significant projects, do a larger mailing. We can start with that because we have heard from people that they didn't hear about it and they lived right, you know, two blocks away, but they weren't quite within the, that. I mean, that'll, that'll help, that'll help. And, and newsletter would, would, would really help, too.
Well, these are the things I'm, I'm thinking about, and maybe Mike was, too, because for, for this society right now, there's different ways to reach people. You know, when I first started doing things, you, you walked door-to-door, or you put notices on bulletin boards or whatever, you know. But now it's social media. I mean, you know, I think that the city of Capitola needs to do more to catch up to that way of reaching out.
Social media person?
We, well, I don't know if we need a social media person, but we, maybe that could be part of the committee, I just don't know. And I'm, I'm in agreement with this general concept that things are different and we have to act differently.
Well, what we need is a PR person, and we, I mean, we're too small for that, but that's what a lot of organizations will employ, is someone that can carry the message to the public, can, can fashion it, knows what to do, what sources to go to that we all don't know what to do, and to get that message out. So you've got to pay for that, you know, and that costs money, well, we don't probably want to spend, but that's the key, that's the key. If you even really want to get your message out there, you use the professionals that know how to get the message out there, and they do it, but it costs a little money. So, I mean, if, if we ever thought it would be worth it, you know, they want to spend some money, I'd say the newsletter route's probably the cheapest way to do it, rather than hire somebody to do it. But there, there probably some other ideas about how we could do a better job of getting the word out about what we're working on and when our meetings are and things like that, to be open to the public. You know, ads, you know, PSA, PSAs are always good, and they're free.
Traditional.
Yeah.
Okay, so the direction to staff is, is that we do not direct you to prepare a resolution to establish a city outreach committee, but if an issue comes up where this could fit into our discussion to bring in a committee of that form, we will expect you to bring it to us. Thank you. Okay, consider sending, this is item 8D, consider sending a letter in opposition to the governor's budget proposal affecting redevelopment dissolution, RN 15, number 15, 09465. Jamie?
Yeah, I'll, I'll present this. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. The city received a request from the, from Assemblymember Mark Stone and also from the League of California Cities to send a letter in opposition to the governor's budget proposal affecting redevelopment dissolution. And the governor's fiscal year 2015, 2016 budget proposal includes a trailer bill to clarify a number of issues associated with the dissolution of redevelopment agencies. And the proposed bill would negatively impact Capitola as well as other cities that are affected by redevelopment agencies. So staff is recommending the mayor sign the letter and we send it off to the state capital.
Thank you, Sue. Is there any member of the public who would like to address us on this issue? Being a councilman?
As your representative on the oversight board, this letter makes perfect sense and we should do it immediately.
Okay, the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Being none, all is in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
I was just amazed where it came from. Reading through it, it was just amazing. I mean, I don't understand.
Anything that has that many retroactive laws in it should be looked at with a jaw to stye.
You know, unbelievable.
I'm very, I'll keep it short because I know it's late, but very funny on this is, is I got a call from the league, a specific recruitment call saying, Jamie, you've got to call your legislators, we need your help, you know, reach out to them. So I pick up the phone and I call Mark Stone's office. Maureen says, I said, I've got to talk to you about that RDA trailer bill. She turns around and says, oh, did you talk to your clerk? Are you going to put it on the agenda? She had just, five minutes before, she'd called the city and said, we need your support, Mark's going to fight this thing, we need your support, Jamie. So we got Mark Stone completely on board, I put the message out to Monting as well. You know, it's just sort of one more nail in the coffin.
And those other bills that I wanted to get a presentation on from the children's network, they've already moved on. In one case, they're in the governor's budget, not at the same level, but, and so there's no need for public support.
Well, we'll adjourn. Thank you, Capitola. We will adjourn to the budget study session agenda on Wednesday, June 3.